Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Ed Markounas. This meeting on the 2020-2021 tentative budget via teleconference is being held pursuant to Executive Order 202.15 issued by Governor Andrew Cuomo on April 9, 2020. Executive Order 202.15 was issued to provide the health and safety of the public during the COVID-19 emergency. This executive order, among other things, suspends Article 7 of the Public Offices Law and commits any public body to hold public hearings remotely through the use of telephone conference, video conference, and/or other similar devices. An audio recording of this teleconference will be posted on the Village of Suffering website. This public meeting was properly noticed and included instructions to the public that public comment may be offered by sending an email to budget@ sufferiny.gov. Next upcoming meeting will be a special meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, April 30, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. for the adoption of the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. And the next regular scheduled meeting of the Village Board of Trustees will be held on Monday, May 4, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. I will now call the roll. Trustee Albert? Trustee Gerard? Trustee Barone?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Megan Corrigan?
Present.
And I am present. Also present on this teleconference are Village Treasurer Michael Janito, Assistant Village Attorney Rob Magrino, and Labor Attorney Richard Glickel. At this time, I ask all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And once again, as we usually do, we stand in memoriam and we think about our servicemen and women serving our country and those that have been inflicted by this horrible disease, the COVID-19, if we can keep everyone in our thoughts. Thank you. May have a seat.
I'm getting some texts that people can't get in.
Okay, Mr. Janito?
Well, they may have the older code that was up there on the website. They have to try the new code for the meeting. If they want to get into the meeting, the new code is 897-980-36144.
We can mention to the public that the chat window has the full address with the website and everything else in case they need that. The full web address is in the chat.
Okay, I'm just going to continue out. Trustee Corrigan transmits that information. Reading of the public comments. So this is Mayor Ed Markounas once again. As of 5:44 today, Village Clerk Amy Paffenroth received nearly 200 comments that will be added to the record of tonight's meeting. I have selected several emails, which I will read, and I will follow by reading the names of all those who submitted the emails as of 5:44. Any public comment received after 5:44 this evening through the adoption of the budget on Thursday, April 30, at a meeting of the Village Board of Trustees scheduled for 7:00 p.m. will also be included in the record for the budget. So just to make the public aware, I don't know how many can see me, but here are the comments and the emails received. 200 emails and comments. Now, I just wanted to read a select few. I mean, it is important enough for the public to be heard, and I will start with Ms. Marsha Fixler. As a senior in the Village of Suffering who has lived here since 1972, I am deeply troubled in hearing that there is a possibility that Village Recreation Department, along with its programs, that both Nancy Christopher and Elaine DeFalco head will be cut from the 2020 budget. Suffering has a population of 11,027 people and 8,879 adults, of which there were 2,041 seniors. Seniors make up about 25% of the adult population in Suffering, and about 40% of the seniors live alone. The Suffering Recreation Department, along with its programs, are an important part of the seniors' life here in Suffering. Both the health and well-being of seniors need activities to look forward to and participate in. The Suffering Recreation has provided the seniors with this, and they would be put at a great disadvantage if they were cut from the budget. As a senior, I do hope that you see this as a necessary part of your budget for 2020 and decide to include the Recreation Department programs in this budget. Thank you. Mr. Stephen Christopher. In an email I received today regarding the special board meeting for tomorrow evening, I saw on the agenda there were plans to eliminate the Recreation Department with the exception of the coordinator. I cannot believe that this is even a consideration. While I can understand if there is no pool opening this season, that there is no need for summer lifeguards, I do believe that the work done every day by two full-time associates in the Recreation Department is not understood or known by the board. You are totally dismissing the value of many wellness programs being held for the village residents, many which are seniors. Many which were started by Nancy Christopher, excuse me, and how much it is helping the village residents, in particular, the seniors. Many of our seniors will tell you how the invaluable and essential to their quality of life these programs are. I can attest that during the COVID-19 crisis, the two individuals you are considering cutting have been reaching out to all of the residents that participate in many wellness programs and checking on their well-being during this time. They have been daily searching out and actively posting activities to help all residents through this situation. Nancy has been a hard-working village employee for more than 16 years and has a real passion for the village. Elaine, as well, has been a hard-working village employee for many years with the seniors in the community center. The elimination of these positions is extremely short-sighted and detrimental to the village. I would encourage that before you make these decisions, that you reach out and ask many of the participants in the Village Recreation and Wellness Programs for their input on the value of these programs. I am sure you will be surprised at how important they are to our residents. I really believe the board should have an understanding as to what people do in their role within the village. I would encourage you to review the entire list of activities this team does on behalf of the village. It is unfortunate that tomorrow's meeting will be a virtual one, and many village residents will not have the opportunity to express their opinions live on these proposed cuts, and many of the seniors may not be savvy enough to use the technology to connect and express their support of these two individuals. Enclosing the value of the village gains from these two individuals far exceeds the impact to our annual budget. Teresa Weingren. The Recreation Department is very important to us seniors. Many of us seniors live alone. It's hard to prepare healthy meals for ourselves. The nutrition class helps me concentrate on preparing simple, healthy foods, and an emphasis on eating fruits, and what to say and what to stay away from. It has taught me to make tasty meals. As for tips, the Recreation Department chooses wonderful plays by otherwise I would never have been able to go to. I look forward to them each spring and fall. These trips keep my mood and spirits up. Lots of us do not have the opportunity to see Broadway plays. I enjoy the exercise classes. They help me with my balance and learn to prevent falls. We learn to breathe better. Better. I was going to move, but I love Suffering so much. Suffering has many things to offer to the seniors. It is the best village in the county. It has helped me not to feel alone. I decided to stay. If a Recreation Department is taken away from us seniors, many of us would have nothing to look forward to. That would be a tragedy. Sincerely, Terry Weingren. Ali Carson. Dear Suffering Trustees, I wanted to take the time out to write this letter on behalf of myself and the seniors of our village. The recent programs from the Recreation Department designed specifically for seniors in our village have made such a positive impact on their lives. They have become more confident, stronger, healthier, and will live longer because of these programs. The chair yoga class taught by Nancy from the Recreation Department is something these seniors look forward to on a weekly basis. The seniors are so excited about the class, they have even showed up in the snow. Another event the seniors look forward to is the Broadway show. It is a great event. Suffering throws. It is a great event, Suffering throws, where the seniors feel safe going into the city with the lead of Nancy. They look forward to doing this yearly. I've went to shows a few times, and the seniors thrive. I think getting rid of the position that plans these events would be a disadvantage to our seniors of the village. Of course, this would be a disadvantage to all age group, as the department plans so many events throughout the year and brings the community together.
Mayor, I just want to interrupt for a quick moment, because I think we've reached a maximum of 100 participants on the call on this video. So anybody else that goes to sign in, I believe they're going to be told that the meeting is full.
Yes, that's the text I'm receiving now, and I am answering.
Well, where I got in?
Mike, can they call in?
From what you said.
I believe it's the same limitation, Rob. They can try to call in. I'll give it a try from home here, and we'll let you know.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, I'll continue reading. To whom it may concern, I am writing to you regarding the positions you are trying to get rid of at the Village of Suffering Recreation Department, and I would strongly advise you to rethink this decision. As a 30-year-old living in Suffering most of my life, did not always, living most of my life in Suffering, did not always have updated programs. The Recreation Department has given the town some updated programs, such as yoga in the park, nutritional workshops, and my personal favorite, the Christmas parade. With the new app, the new apartments built at the train station, the only way to get young adults my age who may eventually start a family in Suffering is to keep these updated free programs happening. They are exciting, things residents can look forward to and enjoy. All my friends look forward to yoga in the park exercise during the nice weather. These are the types of programs you need in order to have a town thrive, and the fact that you are thinking about getting rid of the positions of the people who create and run these events is basically saying you do not care about the good of the town. I highly suggest you reconsider your thought on these jobs, as I think it will be a big Jacqueline Davis, to whom it may concern, as a life-long time Suffering resident, I have to say I was shocked and extremely saddened when I heard tonight of the potential disbanding of two positions in the Recreation Department. As a mother of two young children, we frequently attend many of the events run by the Recreation Department, and they bring my children so much joy. The Easter egg hunt, the Halloween parade, summer kids concerts, Christmas parade, Suffering Day, and that's just to name a few.
Yeah.
Such important events that bring out community together. Most importantly, these programs have been life-changing for many in the elderly community. A few years back, when I lived in Bon Air, I would hear from so many of them about the nutritional workshop, walks with the mayor, and the yoga they did each week. It seemed to give them so much to look forward to and truly so much joy. To take these programs away would be a crime. These programs are more important to the community than you may realize. I ask you to strongly reconsider your vote in eliminating these positions, as I think it would be a detriment to the members of the village. Thank you. Thomas Iquinto. Hello, my name is Tom Iquinto. I have been involved with Suffering Sports my entire life. For the past 11 years, I have been heavily involved in coaching youth sports in Suffering. I am currently the president of the Suffering Midget Mounties. I recently learned that two recreation employees, Nancy Christopher and Elaine DeFalco, are in the budget tomorrow night for being let go. I cannot and should not have to tell you how invaluable these two women are. Nancy, Elaine, Kathy, and Kathy Mills have helped Suffering Midget Mounties tremendously over the years. These women not only work their normal hours, I have witnessed them volunteering countless hours. They always go above and beyond their duties, and it would be a huge mistake to let them go. Not only do they help the Suffering Midget Mounties, they do so much for the senior community. Our seniors are at serious risk, and today my family member received a mask from these ladies. I ask you to please reconsider your decision on letting these two ladies go. These times are extremely difficult, and we are slowly getting back to normal. The governor is going to be opening this soon. There will be guidelines to follow, and these two ladies will be instrumental in helping our seniors, other community members, adjust to these difficult times. Please wait for the state officials to make more decisions and set guidelines for us to follow. Thank you for your time. Jennifer Ola Yan.
Jennifer.
Hi. I hope that you and your families are healthy. It has come to my attention that there is a proposal to discontinue Recreation Department staff. While we all understand the situation we are currently in, this seems a little drastic. Life will go back to normal, and when it does, our community and especially our children will desperately need normalcy. To take away all of the wonderful activities that make this village is deeply upsetting. Were any of the wonderful staff members given the chance to tweet their programs or give ideas on how things could be done once it is safe to do so? Please reconsider this, because you have a very strong, family-oriented community and countless little lives that you will be affecting. This can't happen in our community. Alexandria Tersi. I am so thankful for the wellness program this town provides, especially for the seniors. As a result, my health has benefited tremendously. A few years ago, I was rear-ended in an auto accident. My left side seized in pain from my neck to my ankle. For nine months, I did physical therapy three times a week. After all of that, I was so discouraged, I felt no relief. Then I met Nancy Christopher and started attending the chair yoga classes on Mondays and Fridays. I felt my super tight muscles, that were still locked from the trauma of the accident, relax from the breathing exercises. My strength and range of motion increased better than before my accident. I've also benefited from the drumming class on Wednesdays. I'd leave class so energized and balanced, you don't realize how much your body needed it till after the class, and you feel the extra boost. The nutrition for optimal health workshops, the first Tuesday of the month, and so informative. I have incorporated many of the nutrition recommendations and definitely feel and look healthier. All of these services have been so essential to maintaining and expanding my health, they have been a lifeline. They have been a lifeline. I know that on my own, I would not have been able to find these resources, and I am faithful, I am a faithful attendee and plan my week around these classes. Thank you again for having these services. I urge you to please continue. Mrs. Isabella Hagerty. Dear Suffering Board Members, I am an 88-year-old resident of the Village of Suffering, and I have lived here for the past 61 years. My family and I have used every available recreational service the village has to offer. I became a member of the Suffering Senior Club in 1997, when I retired from the Ramapo Central School District. I am not sure of the date, but sometime around 2003 to 2005, the board voted to have the Stay Fit Program for seniors brought to the community center. It includes six exercise machines, and it met twice a week, sometime after the yoga exercise program began, which also met twice a week. On March 16, 2020, I had a right knee replacement at Good Samaritan Hospital, and I was able to walk without a walker or a cane in three weeks. I believe that because I was a very faithful user of these programs, that my body was strong enough to get me to that point so quickly. It will be a disservice to the senior population if you drop these programs. As far as the pool goes, that is just a total disgrace to the whole community, both children and adults. When my family first came to Suffering, the real estate agent proudly drove us around and showed my husband and I the two newest additions to the village, the brand-new Cypress Road Elementary School and the Suffering Pool, which had opened two years earlier. I have no idea what you people are thinking, but to throw all of the seniors, all of the citizens of this village, under the bus is a total disgrace. If I were you, I would seriously reconsider dropping any of these recreation programs. Wear a mask and stay six feet away from the next person. Sincerely, Isabel Hagerty. My husband, Andrew C. Hagerty, was mayor from 1997 to 2001.
You know, Mayor, before you continue?
Yes.
Mike, is there a way to stream this live on Facebook or something?
At this moment, no. We purchased the license for Zoom, and it's for 100 participants. We really didn't anticipate, because we generally don't even get half of that to a village board meeting. So we're limited to 100. If people are trying to get in and somebody hasn't dropped out, they're going to be told that the meeting is full. That's unfortunate at this time, but we can't stream this live to anywhere else at this moment.
All right. Well, it is a problem, because it's a public meeting, and the executive order does provide that you can have these meetings remotely, but you have to, the public has to be able to at least see it live, even though we're recording it. So, you know, unless we can figure a way, and I do see some chats, I'm not a Facebook person, but people are telling me that you can stream it live on Facebook. If there's a way you can try to stream it live now, we should. If not, I'm thinking we should continue it to another time. I know that doesn't work.
We're going to have a real problem with that, Rob, because we have to get something done tonight, so I don't know if, the only thing I can think of is switching over to GoToWebinar, where we can have multiple people, that means a whole, I can set up that meeting immediately, but then the public doesn't have much notification. We could tell everybody where to go on GoToWebinar to log in.
Can you post that on Facebook? I mean, I'm sorry, on the website?
I'm sorry.
I think that, I mean, if we want to, I could turn my phone on, but then I would be the only one streaming the video. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Right. Rob, would you make that?
Well, wait a minute. Mayor, you would be streaming the video of what, of this meeting?
Of, just of me with the, with the audio of everyone else.
That's fine.
Okay, let me try that, because I have access to the village page.
Mayor, could you point your phone at the computer screen and stream the whole thing live on Facebook?
I'm going to try it right now.
There doesn't have to be video, as long as there's audio. That meets the criteria. The public has access to it.
Okay.
However you can do it.
Okay, that's a great idea.
And so what is this going to appear on, the Village's Facebook page?
Yes.
Mayor, would that be under Facebook page, under your name, or a official website? Because I have people that would like to know.
Village of Suffering.
Village of Suffering, okay, I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeremy Kalfour said there is a way to stream it over to, over to Facebook, but this is, you know, I'm brand-new to this, so I have to apologize, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth, it's worth the effort, because it would be a violation of the open meetings law if we don't allow it.
All right, let me, let me call him and see what he might have to offer.
All right, so in the interim, this is Mayor Ed Markounas streaming. This is Mayor Ed Markounas streaming the Special Village Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, April 28. We're incorporating our ongoing Zoom meeting that has 100 participants, and we're at max capacity, so we are also utilizing Facebook at this time. As I was in the meeting of the reading of certain comments from the public, I will continue.
Well, you know, can you hold on, Mayor?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's going live. It's live, is that what you're saying?
Yep, I got, I got people on here that are watching.
Okay, in the meantime, Mayor, I've got somebody from the village working on us to see if we can get this actual Zoom meeting streamed onto the Facebook page.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And in the interim, is there a way, somebody could post it on the website now? Who has access to the website, just to let them know?
You mean, you mean the link to the, the link to the Facebook page, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, we have, I have the village clerk going to work on that now.
Yeah, Mayor, we're going to work on this offline for a moment, so I'll be offline for a few minutes.
You want to just take, you want to just take a two-minute break, Mayor, and give a chance to catch up? I know it may make the meeting go long, but I wouldn't want to be.
Okay, so let's, let's give it a couple of minutes. We'll continue to stream. I'm getting a lot of, I'm getting a lot of responses on the Facebook Live itself.
Right, and I think going forward, we'll make that a part of the access.
No audio. Right, stand by, everyone. If someone on.
Mayor, I'm sharing your Facebook Live with other groups, and I'm getting a lot of participation.
Yes, I see it. I don't believe I'm getting audio, so I don't know how that works either.
On something here.
No, but you're on 50 viewers right now.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me on Facebook?
I can't hear you now. It seems to be delayed. I just finished your, hearing your speech.
But you do hear video come, I'm sorry, audio coming through Facebook?
Yes, but right now it seems to be, it seems to have stopped. I only take comments, but I don't, I just see a screen.
Have we lost Paul?
No, you didn't lose me. I'm, I'm here the whole time.
Okay, I didn't see you. Oh, wow.
I guess you won't see me unless I speak.
I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anyone know where that's coming from?
You can't call me. So I'm sorry, guys, but this, let's see, I think we're back.
Are we back on Facebook as well, Mayor?
I believe so. No, oh, there we go.
I can't find you on Facebook.
Yeah, this is a.
Anyone know why we're not paying the extra $5?
Mayor, Mayor, if I may, just for a quick second, I'm gonna mute you. I'm sorry, sir. It's not an extra $5. But anyhow, Mayor, I think if you try to go now onto your screen to the ellipse, which is the three dots. Mayor?
Yes, I'm listening.
Yeah. If you go to the three dots on your screen, I think in the upper right-hand corner.
Yes, I'm looking.
And do you see anything that allows you to livestream to Facebook at that point?
No. No.
No, huh? We did set the, maybe because the meeting's already in progress, I'm not sure. But we did set the setting for it. Let's see. Hold on a second. Mayor, let me hold on.
So, Rob, is there a way that we could at least do executive session since the public won't be there anyway?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna suggest to keep things going, but the problem is the public is here. How are we gonna know?
Mayor, hold on. Mayor, Clark Osborne's on the phone and he's got, I want, I want him to say it for you. Go ahead, Clark.
Hey, Mike, Mayor, real quick, if you go to where you're gonna be typing in a message, like under the Facebook post, just click on there where you typed the message. Drop down, look down to the bottom on the background color, it's live video. You would click on that.
On, on the Zoom program? On the Zoom program?
Yeah, on the Zoom, Clark, or is that Facebook you're talking about?
That's Facebook. You want to get, or suggest the video going, you can stream it from that live video. But once you click the live video, if you click it off, you gotta start it again.
Yes, the phone keeps dropping out.
Yeah, so he's saying that if you go onto the Facebook account. Say it again, Clark?
From the computer, I think.
Where you would type a message, Mayor.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get to the Facebook account. So, right, so I'm on the Facebook account.
Okay, hold on, Clark. He's trying to get to the Facebook account now. Okay, so you're on the Facebook account. And, and what is that, Clark? You go to an area where you're going to type a message?
Yeah, Mike, you would go in where he's typing the message. You just look down below that, below photo, video, check-in, live video is the bottom, the bottom icon. It says live video with a red camera. If you click that, point to that, you're gonna have to obviously turn around to see the Zoom. That will definitely put it over live.
Now, did you get that, Mayor?
Well, I have it and I had it streaming, so I believe I, let's see.
On Facebook with that little camera that you turned on?
I believe it's what the mayor was doing and we were capturing it, but then he fell off.
No. Okay, so I'm streaming it live now.
The mayor is streaming it live now, he said.
Okay, let me take a look right now. I'm on the page also, I got access. Let me just see what comes up real quickly. Uh, yeah, we're on, yep, 53 seconds going up. It's on right now. Like your name is showing up on it, that's fine.
Yeah, that's, probably it's under my account. Okay, so we have then.
Can you hear the audio?
Can you hear the audio, Clark?
Yes, audio's on.
Audio and video.
Correct. So we have then. Can you hear the audio? Yes. Can you hear the audio, Clark? Yes.
Clark said he can hear the audio, yes.
Yes.
There's a delay going on.
That's okay, I just shut off my phone, so.
Oh, this is fucking useless.
I'm gonna hang up so it's not to have any feedback here.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to continue now with the live streaming of Facebook, and I'm gonna continue the Special Village Board meeting Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. We've been experiencing technical difficulties. I'm in the midst of reading public comment from selected individuals of over 200 emails that were sent in in regards to the budget. Suffering Village Board, my husband and I had moved to Suffering a little over 10 years ago. Currently have two children, attendant RP Connor, ages seven and 10. I was just pregnant with my daughter when we moved into the neighborhood, and the couple we purchased the house from raved about the neighborhood and community. It didn't take long for me to learn what an incredible village it was, particularly in what's available to families. We are embedded and invested in suffering. Myself as the RP Connor PTA President and member of the Suffering Junior Women's Club, my children in Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and kids who actively join village activities. As the years progressed, my children have spent more and more time at village events. We live at the Suffering Pool over the summer, a source of joy for my children and myself. I am so excited that within a couple of years, my daughter will be old enough to participate in the Clifford Theater. Kathy Mills and her team create incredible community. These events and facilities are assets to living here. Over the years, with rising taxes and other concerns about the community, despite our fears, my husband and I have felt that it was the community, the village creates that makes it worth it to stay here despite our growing concerns. And while our current pandemic is reason to think that Recreation Department will not be spending the entirety of their budget to decimate, the budget is utterly unwise and devastating. Give the department, give the department opportunities to be agile, flexible, and adjust programming to fit what I am sure will be the ever-changing policies and guidelines. Do not cut employees and the pool budget. If monies are not spent, let it accrue as excess funds. It seems common sense to know that when a department budget line is cut, it is ridiculously difficult to have reinstated. If we want to fight for our amazing village to grow, especially as city families in light of events are looking to relocate to places more spacious, we need to keep this excellent Recreation Department. The activities they provide will only serve to draw on new families. Making these cuts will just invite families who pay high taxes to consider leaving. In short, find another way to save money. Keep these budgets and employees so that when life resumes back to normal, these activities and facilities can continue being an absolute draw to our community. Sarah Vanola. Robert Veltetti. My name is Bob Veltetti, and although I am not currently a resident of the Village of Suffering, I was for 28 wonderful years. During that time, my family took advantage of many of the village recreation programs. Even now, my wife and I still take, still take an active part in Suffering's happenings. I understand that with the current COVID-19 pandemic, there has to be curtailment of recreational activities, but this will not last. This will not last forever. If you look at all the great programs, the Village of Suffering offers to the public, and we'll be losing no Suffering Day, no Halloween Parade, no window painting for the Suffering Middle School, no Christmas Parade, no Memorial Day Parade, no Veterans Day Parade.
Continue up, your video has ended.
Okay. All right, so let me just continue and we'll, we'll discuss this. No recreation center, no Easter egg hunt, no Easter bunny, no Santa Claus, no light, lighting of the menorah, no exercise classes, no concerts in the park, no Family Day at the pool, no fishing derby, no Clifford Theater, no senior picnic, no Girl Scout International Night, no Mawa Hoop Chutes, no Lions Club Taste of Suffering, no blood drives, no Boy Scout ceremonies, no Boy Scout Pine Wood Derby, no Pop Warner Trophy Night, no Suffering Middle School Pocket Book, Pocket Book fundraiser. No ceremonies, no lead. Life exists against drugs. We won't have that. No Young Life Programs, no Art in the Park, no Keep Rockland Beautiful events, no movie in the park, no Pearl Harbor Ceremony, no life, no Lifeline Health Screening, no Self-Defense Classes, no various community trips to Broadway, no work, no nutrition workshops. You will see that when this trying time is over, there will be a great need for the Recreation Department to be working viable, to be a working viable entity. As you can see, there is more to the Suffering Recreation Department than running the Suffering Pool. In the 1970s, when I ran the Suffering Pool, I was asked by then volunteer Recreation Director Sheila Whittington to sit down and work on the establishing a full-time paid Recreation Department in Suffering, one that would meet the needs of the growing community and make the Village of Suffering an attractive place to live and raise a family. It would be a shame that now, over 50 years later, the Village of Suffering would see fit to throw it all away. I'm asking you please to keep the Recreation Department in the budget, and hopefully when this pandemic is over, we can get back to some semblance of our lives. So I understand we don't have the stream, the Facebook stream. I don't know why.
Can you restart it, Mayor?
Let's see what happens when we restart it. Yes, it's restarted. Okay, just a few more because over, over the 200 emails and concerns from the people, I believe that we need to hear these comments, not all, not all 200, but, you know, to select few. So I'll continue for a bit. Red Cow. As a member of the Suffering's 80-plus group, I strongly urge the board to reject the passage of the new budget at tonight's meeting. At a time when our country is in a major upheaval, we should all uphold each other rather than tear down all that is a source of friendship and relaxation. Vote no to the new budget. Anna Deriband. Robert Slovakowski. Hello, my name is Robert Slovakowski and I am a junior at Suffering High School. I was told by my friends today that there are talks of cutting recreational events within the community, including Clifford Theater. For the past three years, this program has been my home. Not only does it provide residents with a creative outlet, but it allows for the community to be brought together. Some of my best friends that I will cherish for the rest of my life were the people that I met while doing Clifford Theater. And I think that it would be a terrible mistake to cut this program entirely. Kids from the sixth through 12th grade look forward to this for the entire year, and I can completely and honestly say that is, that it, that it has changed my entire life. It has truly brought so much happiness into my life, and to cut this program would cut what makes Suffering community so close. The money to fund the show and the costumes cost could come from donations received last year as well as fundraisers that could be carried out until the program actually starts in July. I cannot express how much it would mean to myself and the rest of our Clifford family if you could allow us, allow for us to keep putting our shows on and provide this sense of joy to the community. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for your time. Christian Sia. To whom it may concern regarding reading the cuts being made to our village, I find disturbing and not to mention pulling the carpet underneath one's feet without the input and thought to work around this. There is always another way. Please consider alternatives if you are not tearing up the heart for which makes Suffering great. Please consider all other alternatives. Christian Sia. Dear Suffering Board, Karen Cresser, Dear Suffering Board, as a resident of Suffering since 1983, I was disappointed to learn that the proposed budget eliminates funding for most Suffering recreation. The activities for, for residents organized by the Village of Suffering are part of what makes Suffering great and a factor in why my husband and I chose to raise our two children in Suffering. While we understand the current mandates from the state prohibit public gatherings, it is short-sighted to think that this is a permanent situation. When the stay-at-home orders are lifted, Suffering residents will be looking for the activities they have come to love and expect. The staff, Elaine DeFalco and Nancy Christopher are the face of Suffering for so many and have become friends to all. Please reinstate the Suffering Recreation Budget. Karen Sia. Yeah, we're still having issues. Okay. Hello, Mr., hello, Mayor. Mayor McConus and Village Trustees, I thank you for your time and work for our village, especially during the
Okay, Ed, if I can interrupt, I'm sorry. Saying we're still having issues with Facebook? With streaming it live over Facebook?
Yes.
All right, so I, I, you know, that's a problem. We can't continue the meeting if people can't see it. That's a problem.
Okay. Okay. Wow. I guess we're going to have to adjourn the meeting until tomorrow. That's what I would make the recommendation. I'm sorry for the inconvenience to all. The recommendation from the attorney is that we need to have the public be able to see the live stream. It's not fair to all, so I am going to make the motion to adjourn this meeting until...
Mayor, Mayor, would you prefer, I mean, we could go on to GoToWebinar. That can take up to 1,000 attendees. And we can, I can start that meeting almost immediately. The information to the meeting, I guess we'd have to post it to the public. Let me just see if there's a way I can start that meeting up while you continue this. If you just mind, just give me five minutes.
But don't, yeah, I mean, don't continue the meeting. We have to wait until we...
Well, no, of course, I just, let's just pause the meeting and let me see if I can go separately out and see if there's a, a way to start that up on GoToWebinar that gives us, as I say, up to 1,000 participants.
Okay, and if you get the link, Mr. Janito, please just text it over to the Village Clerk email, Village Clerk, and we'll have it immediately posted if possible. Right now, we're going into a 10-minute recess.
Okay, well, let's keep, yeah, that's fine. Let's keep everything on because I can also let people who are listening know where to go. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes, I'm gonna keep everything on, but I'm just informing everyone that we are going to take a 10-minute recess due to technical difficulties, and we will resume the meeting.
Okay, very good, Mayor.
Hey, Mike. I have Ed on speakerphone because his, it's not working for him either.
Yeah, I'm saying that we're, we're just have, we're better off just adjourning this meeting at this point, pick it up tomorrow, hopefully early as possible.
Okay, hold on. Ed, did you hear him?
Yes, I, yes, I heard him.
Okay. Did you get that, Ed?
Yeah, I got it. So we're gonna, okay, can, can you put this, your phone to the speaker so all can hear me?
Yes. I don't mean to sound like an idiot, but exactly where's my speaker on an iPad? Any clue?
No, I don't. I think you have to look for a little pinhole. I think there's a small pinhole somewhere.
Okay, that should be it. There's a... Okay, go ahead.
We can't hear, we can't hear, like, I can't hear Charles on the GoToWebinar app, and I can't, like, I think I'm muted as well on GoToWebinar. I have both open right now.
Steve, the mayor's trying to
Are you sure you hear me on GoToWebinar or do you hear me on Zoom? Because I'm talking
I hear you on Zoom. The mayor's trying to speak. Hold on.
Okay, can the board members hear me?
Can you hear Ed, the board members?
All right, Joe.
Yes.
So I Yes, Charles can hear. Oh, my goodness, this is crazy.
It is crazy, Ed. I feel so bad for everybody.
Joe, can you, can you do me a favor? Can you adjourn the meeting on my behalf until tomorrow? I hope this works for everybody at 10 o'clock in the morning. Is that something you can do? Like, can you come at 10?
Yes, I can, but I would, yes, 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 yes. I, I'll, I'll take tomorrow off.
Okay, I know the others are working from home. So if you can say, on the mayor's behalf, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, hold on. This is Joe Megan Corrigan on the Mayor Ed McConus's behalf. He would like to adjourn the meeting. Go ahead.
Until April 29?
Until April 29.
At 10:00 AM?
Would, do you want to check with the others?
I don't, how am I gonna do that, Joe? I understand. But let's just do 10:00 AM for now, then we'll see.
Okay, so we'll do, we're gonna go for 10:00 AM tomorrow once the mayor has spoken with each trustee to confirm that
You're good for 10:00 AM tomorrow?
Yes, but if it's going to, but, but it's going to be on making sure that all the trustees can make it, Steve, okay? So the mayor's gonna call, Ed, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the mayor's gonna call each trustee and confirm the timeline.
Good, and also just relay to whoever's listening that we are trying our best to conform to New York State Open Meetings requirements.
Okay, and to everyone who is listening, please understand that we are trying our very best to be sorry. To, to conform and abide, to conform and abide by the open law meetings for New York State. Sorry, Ed.
Correct.
Sorry.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, I guess we'll talk in a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
Bye. Meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. Welcome to the Special Village Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 29, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and let us remain standing, and once again, let us think about our troops serving our country, serving our country here and overseas, and let us think about the victims of the terrible COVID virus. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Ed McConus. This public meeting of the 2020-2021 tentative budget via teleconference is being held pursuant to Executive Order 202.15 issued by Governor Andrew Cuomo on April 9, 2020. Executive Order 202.15 was issued to provide for the health and safety of the public during the COVID emergency. This executive order, among other things, suspends Article 7 of the Public Offices Law and permits any public body to hold public hearings remotely through the use of telephone conference, video conference, and/or similar service. An audio recording of this teleconference will be posted on the Village of Suffering website. This public meeting was properly noticed and included instructions to the public that the public comment may be offered by sending an email to budget@ sufferiny.gov. Please be advised that in addition to streaming the meeting on Zoom, the special meeting of the Board of Trustees will be streamed live through Zoom onto the Village of Suffering Facebook page, or the link can be found there. The Village of Suffering Facebook public page can be accessed directly using the Facebook app. The information has been posted on the Village of Suffering website. And I'll have a roll call of trustees. Trustee Albert.
Here.
Trustee Barone.
Here.
Trustee Gerard.
I'm here.
Trustee Megan Corrigan.
Present.
And the mayor is present also. Also present on this teleconference are Village Treasurer Michael Janito, Assistant Village Attorney Robert Magrino, and Labor Attorney Richard Glicko. Next upcoming meetings, a special meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, April 30, 2020, at 7:00 PM for the adoption of the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. A regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees will be held on Monday, May 4, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Janito, Treasurer Janito, please provide the board with an overview of the proposed 2021 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, what we have here is some proposals that were made by the Village Board, and they include the following. To lay off the entire Recreation Department, including seasonal swimming pool employees, except for the department head, who is the recreation coordinator. The swimming pool will not be open this summer, and it will be determined after review as to what, if any, other recreation programs will continue. Since the swimming pool will be closed, the swimming pool revenues of $49,000 will be reduced to zero, as will the concession, that is, the snack stand revenues, reduced from $5,000 to zero. Recreation programs revenue is reduced from $15,000 to zero. Recreation contractual costs associated with operating the pool will be reduced by $18,500, representing pool chemicals and the amount of $6,000, and pool repair and maintenance amounts of $10,000, and uniforms for the pool staff amounting to $2,500. Recreational contractual costs will be further reduced by $2,000 for summer programs, and the senior citizen lunches and the amount of $5,000 will be eliminated. The Recreation Center contractual costs, meaning utilities, will be reduced by $5,000. The contingent account has been reduced an additional $50,000 for a total of $100,000 from the original $200,000 budgeted in the tentative budget. Unemployment costs will increase $12,000 to cover the cost of two full-time recreation employees who will be unemployed due to the reduction in Recreation Department staffing. Police overtime will be reduced from 40,000, I'm sorry, 400,000 to 360,000. A part-time parking enforcement officer will be laid off. Interest earnings, previously not included in prior budgets as due to the volatile nature of those revenues, will be included in the budget in the amount of $40,000. And with those changes, we end up with a budget where the total appropriations amount to 15,000, I'm sorry, 15,843,045. Total estimated revenues, other than property taxes, are 4,011,741. And so that brings us with a net tax levy of $11,831,304. When you apply that against our taxable assessed valuation of $131,966,754, we come out with a tax rate per 1,000 assessed valuation of $89.66. What that means is that a home, typical median taxable assessed value of a single-family home of $41,100 amounts to a village tax amount of approximately $3,685 or an increase of $110. The tax rate and the median home rate would rise by 3.1%. The change of revenue or an expenditure in total that would affect the budget by 1% in terms of the tax rate, you'd have to have $118,000 in reduced revenues, I'm sorry, increased revenues, reduced expenditures, or a combination of the two. We should also note that on the tax bills, we typically have the breakdown percentage-wise of departments. The Police Department will represent 55% of the taxes paid, the Fire Department, 5%, and all other municipal services of the village, 40%. Now, that is what we had with the general fund. The water fund will have a, well, let's go to the, I'm sorry, solid waste first, which is the Curbside Solid Waste District. We actually had an increase of two units to be serviced. The amount would go from the adopted budget last year of $540 to $556, in other words, $16 more a year. The Container Solid Waste District, which services the condos and co-ops of the village by a private contractor that is contracted through the village, will go from $182 per unit to $207. We'll note that the reason for that is that the budgets in prior years had been based on the same dollar amount because we had a four-year contract with a contractor with the same dollar amount. They went out to bid recently. I believe there were three bids that, I'm sorry, they were sent out to bid, and we only received one quote, and that contractor happens to be the same contractor that currently does it. And it's a two-year contract that has an increase of a total of approximately $25 per unit. On the water fund, the water fund essentially is, the rates will remain essentially the same. We have a larger budget, but then again, a slightly larger amount in revenues. But in any, any event, the rates for water will remain approximately the same as last year. And the sewer fund rates will rise so that the average homeowner, average amount paid by somebody in the village will actually go up about $24, about $2 a month. And so that is what we had, that the Village Board had talked about initially. Now, today, we also received from the Department of Public Works, and, which was also copied to the Village Board, they had some additional cuts in lines that if I just take a second here to add them up, it looks like it's about $75,000 or $80,000 in total cuts, which I don't know if the board had time to review those cuts and determine whether or not they wish to bring them forward. So that is where we stand at the moment, Mayor, and and that's the summary of it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that detailed summary. At this time, I would like the Treasurer, Michael Janito, I will ask you to help guide the board as we off, now offer residents the opportunity to provide public comment.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. So we're going to open it then to public participation? And
Before we open it to public participation, I just have two, two memos that I would like to read before we go to public participation. And I believe they are worth reading because one comes from a, a highly regarded veteran of the community, and then one senior senior citizen, and I believe she's the president, and she really did want me to citizen, and I believe she's the president, and she really did want me to express these concerns. So I'll start off with the veteran. Dear Mr. Mayor, I am writing to you this afternoon in response to the current discussion of eliminating positions at the village's Recreation Department. I am writing to you as a lifelong resident father, grandfather, son, and a veteran of the United States Navy. Suffering is a great place to live and a safe place to live, and a great place to raise a family. A significant contributor to the quality of life in Suffering is the outstanding work of our Recreation Department. Suffering is better than, suffering is better than making a decision that would jeopardize health and wellness programs for our treasured seniors, events like Suffering Day, the East Egg Hunt, and that bring our community together, and more importantly, show our children what real community is. Events that honor our fallen heroes on Memorial Day, all those who have worn the cloth of our great nation on Veterans Day, and the commemoration of the second of these, of the two of the most devastating days in our nation's history, Pearl Harbor Day and 9/11. Leaders make tough decisions in tough times. I get it. The tough decision is not making staff cuts. That's the easy way out. The tough decision is to decide, to collectively roll up our sleeves and figure out how to keep the staff whole, so that the village stays strong and resilient in the toughest of times. While I am disappointed that this decision is even happening, I am also hopeful that the Village Board will take pause, discuss options, and rise to the occasion with the right solution for all our citizens. Let me know how I can help. Very respectfully, Mike Burns. And I, that's Mike's statement, and it's a great statement, and I really do concur with the statement. Leaders make tough decisions. Let's roll up our sleeves. Let's figure out how we can keep this staff, so that the village stays strong and resilient. That is my sentiment also. I just really did feel the need to read that. And then, one of the presidents from the, from the senior citizens. We were just informed about the village budget regarding the destruction of the Recreation Department and the Suffering Seniors Club. We have been members for over 10 years and love it. The club is the only place where seniors could come together to socialize, have parties, go on trips, play bingo, do art classes, and have nutrition classes. The club is, the club is our special place to visit our friends and enjoy activities. We have an average of 70 members that come to meetings twice a month. We have, we are angered at the fact you tried to sneak these cuts under the radar, so that we wouldn't have a chance to voice our opinion. It is great that the word got out, and all but not giving the public a chance to be heard is downright sneaky and dishonest. Many seniors do not know how to use the Zoom or have computers. A simple phone call for us would be much better. We love our club, and if the budget is passed, you will have many, many unhappy seniors. So that, those are two issues that I really would like, like to express.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with the sentiments in the letters that you have been reading, and the board has had a, changed in their direction, and with the help of the village's union leaders and department heads, an agreement has been reached that the Rec Department no longer needs to be laid off.
Well, that's, that's great news. I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
I want to take this one step further, because I think it's very important to alert the public about this, okay? So on Monday, at about 12:50 PM, is when I received final word from each of the trustees, who had all worked on different aspects of budget cuts, and put them all into a single email, and sent it to the mayor and, and to Mr. Janito, the treasurer. The email included the names of people that were possibly going to be laid off. This was not my idea to lay them off. I was working very hard to prevent that. I want to say that in the background. Having said that, it was one of the, one of the items that we were presenting as a way to keep the tax increase low, because this mayor has raised your taxes over 30% in the last five years. Last year was a 6.9% increase. We were not going to allow that. It was proposed to be 8.3% this year. We said absolutely not. We found the cuts. Now, those two names that were in the email, the email was marked confidential, urgent, okay? So, so basically, it was marked confidential, which means that the contents of that email, the names of the employees in question, for example, and their positions, was not something that should have been revealed, and it is my opinion that the mayor violated the law by revealing the names of people before we had actually vetted this with the mayor, with the treasurer, with anybody, to find out if this is something even feasible to do. Instead, the mayor advertised this by email, by, by post, by whatever, to the Chamber of Commerce and to other avenues, listing the names from a confidential email in violation of village law. According to my information, Village Law 22-5-G is a, it, it is a violation to reveal confidential information, and I just wanted to alert the public that Mr. Markounis, the mayor, is playing games with you and using you to drum up support to say the trustees are not doing their job, when in fact, the trustees have been working very hard to find the cuts, and the mayor has provided very little guidance, because he is not very good at communicating. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you for those comments. Just to make you aware that when those documents and the email exchange was presented, and was presented into the tentative budget, it then was published and became a public document at that time, so there was no violation of any law. I did ask the Labor Council attorney if it was, if it was able to be published, and it was able to be published as a public document, since it was being passed into the tentative budget.
But it was not something that we had finalized agreement on. We did not, we did not have a meeting on it. It would have been discussed at the meeting last night, but it...
It's a proposal. It was a document, a tentative document, that was brought in and accepted and pushed into the budget. So at that time, it became a public document. Thank you, and I, and I am trying to protect the entire village, the residents, and the staff, and the union. I didn't want to go down this road at the same time of violating the union contract, and also civil service law and the Taylor Law, without direct discussion with the union. There are issues. That's why you need the guidance. That's why you need to seek out the people that have the most knowledge. That's my point.
Mayor, when you receive, when you receive an email that has some suggestions on it, if something isn't right, it's your duty to notify the board and say, hey, this isn't right, okay? Rather than publicizing it and creating ill will from 300 people that have sent letters, when we had absolutely, at least from my own perspective, I know that you can ask the trustees, I've been working with them for the last several days, to prevent these layoffs that were proposed, okay? So I want to make that clear.
And this is what we received in feedback, because of the direction that you were going. I don't, I need to roll up my sleeves, just like one of the veterans sent in a letter. We need to roll, we need to move past this. This, as you stated, as Mr. Barone stated, that this is not going through, and I am glad, and I applaud you, and I recognize the hard work that you have been doing, absolutely. But we need to get back on track. We need to have this village full. We need to have it whole. We need to keep our employees. We need to protect our seniors, our veterans, everyone, and that's what I am imploring you to do today, and I know we are going to do it.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you. Why did you call an executive session last Thursday to discuss employee matters?
Last Thursday to discuss employee matters was based on the needs of what was going to happen here in the budget.
Okay, so you called a meeting to discuss what? What, removing, removing positions?
No, absolutely not. There was no, no time, at no time was I removing positions, so let's make that clear.
You called a meeting to discuss employee matters. The board came into that meeting expecting to discuss a litigation that was taking place that we did not know about, but we found it on an attorney bill, and so we thought we were going in there to talk about that. What ended up being the discussion is you brought up the pool, and you brought up the Rec Department. So why are you putting this all on the trustees, when this was discussed at a meeting that you specifically called?
Because here's the document. Here's the document with your proposal. I'm sorry.
There's no document that we were, what are you holding up?
There's no document with the proposal of the elimination of the two rec employees? That's what I keep saying. We need to get by this. This is what you proposed, the Board of Trustees on behalf, the email from trustee Albert, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, here are our proposals. I'm sorry, but that's what it is, but we need to get this budget passed today and tomorrow, without affecting...
You called, you called a meeting, you called a meeting to discuss this topic when you left the meeting. Did you leave that meeting?
What was discussed in executive session is privileged and confidential, and at this time, I am not discussing that information, although I would need to go back to my documents and look at it. I didn't put forth the proposal. Let's get over this, because you, we have the documents indicating on behalf of the Board of Trustees.
Mayor, can you read the, can you read the subject line of that document, please? I know the document you're referring to. Can you read the subject?
Well, I would have to pull up the email.
The subject line says confidential. I just want to be clear about that. Confidential. In other words, it was something that was on the table, and then I went on to discuss that this was, in fact, what, to agree with what Paul is saying, this was something previously discussed.
You called the meeting to discuss this. You left the meeting without disputing anything was decided to come out of there. You were supposed to talk to your department heads about it, because you have demonstrated many times, you do not want the trustees talking to your department heads. You've, you've pushed back, and as many times, we don't pay attention to it, because you have no right to do that, but you are supposed, you were supposed to communicate it to them to discuss ways of finding another way. You didn't do that. You decided instead to broadcast to the village that these four individuals want to do this, and I have nothing to do with it. You had everything to do with it. You called the meeting.
At no time...
What do you have to say about that?
At no time.
As mayor of this village, as mayor of this village, are you going to stand here and say that you were not part of that discussion, and you, you did not walk out of that discussion in alignment with everybody in the room?
I would say I was not in alignment with everyone in the room.
Oh, really? You didn't say, you didn't state that at all? You didn't state that at all?
I don't believe so. No, I mean, no. I am not in alignment with reducing the staff anywhere in the village.
You're not aligned with it, but you called the meeting to talk about it.
Okay, let's, let's move on, as we usually say.
You, you're not, you're not being honest with the public. You called this meeting to talk about this very topic. You left with the outcome that was reflected in what Mike Janito wrote, and you turned around and said to the village residents, I had nothing to do with this, they did it. That's dishonest, and that's what you did.
Why don't we poll, why don't we poll all four trustees, who are right here?
Go ahead. You can poll, you could poll the board, that's absolutely fine. I'm just stating the facts that, that I am not aligned with the reduction enforced for any employee here in the Village of Suffering.
We're not, we've found the cuts needed to prevent it, so that's clear to the public. We've prevented...
Okay, well, let's hear the cuts that are going to be able to enable us to keep the employees.
Excuse me, Mayor, Board? I just wanted to make you aware that we're getting comments in from the chat, that the public is waiting to speak.
Okay.
Okay, so then...
Let's, let's open it up to audience participation.
Right, and I'll just give some guidelines to the public, because again, you know, the way to be, noticed to be heard, is if you are on a computer or device or smartphone with the app, you should be able to send the chat in to simply say, I wish to be heard. And as we see the names come up, I will announce the name to the board. I will find you in the participant list, and I will then unmute you. We ask that you keep your comments or questions to three minutes or less, and if you have comments or questions that would exceed that period of time, by all means, just summarize them so they stay within the three minutes, and you can send them in to budget@ sufferiny.gov. They will become part of the public record. So with that, I see that...
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You read the budget details, but not the latest version. The latest version restores the Rec Department. If you were to read those to the public, then all the questions supporting bring-back the Rec Department, those comments would be moot, because they have been brought back.
I, I'm obviously not in possession of anything that says the Rec Department is being brought back. The only thing that I received today were some additional suggested cuts in Recreation that actually had been a misunderstanding, and they were corrected. I then also received that the senior citizens lunch, they wanted to restore that $5,000. The only other communication I received in terms of changes to the budget were additional cuts on the part of the Public Works Department, which I had mentioned earlier.
Right, and, okay, so I guess then, it, my mistake for not putting that in writing, because I thought when, Mayor, when you had called me earlier today, I thought our conversation was the reason why we were wanting these cuts, that the DPW and Joe and, and Charles came back with, Charles Sawicki, that, that we were able to keep our taxes down, and we were able to get to the number that we needed to get to, to protect our village residents, and they provided enough money so that we could protect our employees as well. So I thought when we had that conversation today, that that was understood. I guess that was my mistake, Michael, for not actually writing that, because I had a conversation with the mayor today with that, and that's what the last discussion that we had. So I do apologize if I need to send an email right now with it to make it official. I have no problem with that, but I did think the conversation that I had with the mayor this afternoon was exactly telling what the monies were going to be for, and how we were so happy that we were able to get to a number, and no one ever wants to do layoffs. It was the last choice possible, and we were only talking about it. We were not making it a definite, because a tentative budget means that there needs to be discussions done. So how can I rectify that, Michael?
Well, I think, as we know, at the end, conclusion of this meeting, one of the things that we're going to ask the board for is a summary of all the additional changes that they want proposed for the budget, because we have April 30 as the date to adopt this budget, so we have roughly a day to put everything in order. So let us go to the public and get their comments. It's understood now that, if I'm understanding it correctly, the Village Board has determined that there is a way to restore the Recreation Department with the additional cuts that were made by Public Works. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is 100% correct. That's exactly the conversation I had with the mayor today.
There was an email, there was an email sent. Is that correct, Joe?
I, I, the email was sent from Charles, and then I had the conversation with you. So I guess my mistake was that I didn't follow up with an email to, to Michael, saying that this is in lieu of, because I had the conversation with you, and I don't know why I thought you were with him at the time, so I guess, you know...
Right, those, those items, those line items need to be reviewed by the treasurer and the department head. Just as the, just as the additional cuts to Recreation were reviewed.
Well, I did, Mayor, I did take a look at the lines. They do have the, the funds in the lines, that they can reduce the lines. My, my only concern, of course, was whether or not they could live with those cuts throughout the year, seeing that initially, as you know, when they made a department request on the Department of Public Works, the original budget request that they made, you and I had met with... you and I had met with the superintendent of Public Works to discuss the budget. As a result, there were significant cuts from his original request that all ended up being the tentative budget. When a tentative budget was proposed, subsequent to that, Public Works came back again with additional, what I would consider significant cuts. And those were accepted. And now here are what I would consider another group of conditional cuts, so significant cuts. So I'm just simply saying that it's three rounds of very significant cuts on the part of Public Works that I appreciate it. It's the question of whether or not in the course of the year, they can actually live with that reduction in a budget. Because as you know, this budget is going to be rather lean. There's not going to be a lot of cushion in it. And if they were to run short in the course of the year, it's going to be a scramble to try to find where it is. But in any event, because these numbers, and in fact, that email came in at something like 2:00 this afternoon, there obviously wasn't sufficient time to take all of this into account with the $5,000 for the senior program, plug it all back into the system and the budget and come up with a new revised rate that I could present to you tonight. But at the close of tonight, if we confirm all these numbers, I will put them in and come up with whatever the budget is. My anticipation would be that the cuts that are being proposed, I don't know if the dollar amount, but I don't believe that it covers all of the amount that would have been if the recreation department were cut the way it was proposed. What I'm basically saying is I don't know if this would make up that difference. And the rate that you were quoted earlier of 3.1% would probably be higher.
Yeah, Mike, thank you. No, that's right, we, it's, we estimated that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.7%. So something pretty close, something still under 4%, but you're right, a little higher. But, you know, given the, you know, and I applaud the rest of the trustees for rolling up their sleeves and, and as leaders, rolling up their sleeves and finding a way to, to get this done. It is a little bit more of a, of a tax rate, slightly more, but still hopefully manageable.
Okay, so with that, I think we can move on to the public. We've got at least about 10 people waiting. Again, the public participation, the chat is now open, but we only want people to use that to say, I wish to be heard. And you can ask your questions or make your comments at that point. And so what I'm going to do is find you on the participant list and then unmute your microphone to give you the opportunity to speak. So the first one is, and excuse me if I mispronounce names, but the first one on the list of participants to speak is going to be Catherine from Maine, is it? So let's see if we can find Catherine. Bear with me. Here we go. All right, Catherine, I'm unmuting you. I hope you can hear us and let's see if we can hear you.
Hi, good, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So thank you all for your time in rescheduling this with a tight schedule. We do appreciate it, the residents do. So I have specific questions that I have concern about, specifically to the contingency account. And I'd like to know why we're removing $100,000. I mean, currently we have 15% of the required contingency balance. And we just received, you know, applause for that in January from the auditors and New York State Budgeters want 20%. So I'd like to hear from the board trustees in regards, especially after Michael Janito's expertise as treasurer telling us and warning us that we shouldn't even dip into those funds unless it's for a one-time capital improvement. So I'd like to know exactly what's going on with that. And that question last week from Janito was, you know, pointed to the trustees and the board, what's our trick next year for balancing the budget? I have really, really big concerns taking $100,000 from the contingency account and affecting our Moody's score. So I'd like to hear from everybody, please.
Catherine, let me, if I may, I wish to clarify something on that, Catherine. The, the cut that they're making is in the contingent account, not in the fund balance. The fund balance is like your savings in the bank. And so that's one thing. And that's what is 15% of revenue or expenditures at the moment. And which, as you mentioned, the state comptroller's office says it should be somewhere, or Moody's says it should be over 20%. And state comptroller, somewhere between 17 and 20% is a minimum. The contingent account is an amount of money that's put into the budget over the past few years in order to provide for the unknown and the unexpected. It also, over the past few years, was used to help provide funds for the raises that, of contracts that hadn't been settled yet. And not knowing the amount of the contract amounts, there was an amount in there. So the original tentative budget provided for $200,000 worth of contingency, I was not too uncomfortable going down about $50,000 on that, simply because we don't have, all of our contracts are settled at the moment. The one contract that's expiring at the end of fiscal 2021 is the police contract. And then other contracts are a couple of years or a year after that. So I didn't mind going down 100 to 150,000. Now subsequently, the board has proposed the reduction of an additional 50,000 in contingency. And for that, I just caution the board that when we're dealing with the concern about revenues and how they may be affected significantly in the forthcoming year because of COVID-19, it's not the expenses that worry us, it's the revenue side of things. And that contingency would be used to help provide for any emergency situation like that. We also have had very mild winters and the snow budget is a very bare-bones snow budget at the moment, in my opinion. If we were to get hit with a bad winter, that might be something we would tap into contingency or any other major event that, where you lost major revenue or expenditure. So I don't think that Moody's would have a big issue with it. It's just that as the lower you bring your contingency, the less that you have to prepare for the unexpected. And I, I hope that answers your question.
So if we currently have, thank you, Michael, if we currently have 15% with this deduction, where would we be, I guess? That would be.
Well, it doesn't, okay, so there's two things. There's that fund balance, which is like our bank account. And what the other thing contingency is, is that as you earn money this, this year, you're going to put a little bit aside for unknown things. So you don't have to touch your fund balance. So I don't think that it's going to have an impact on our credit rating. But I would just, again, as we lower that amount, we leave ourselves less cushion to, to absorb shocks.
Right, so what is that $50,000 being allocated that you questioned the board on?
Well, that was being used to help bring the tax rate down.
Okay, so I, that's the part that concerns me. And the other thing I have a question about, if I may, and then I know I can't take the floor the whole night and I get that. So I appreciate the time. So other business owners and executives, I'm in corporate America, the executives are taking a salary deduction of 10% or some cases more, just to balance the budget. Have, has the board considered taking a reduction of any, at all, to help us with this budget and this crisis that we're going through right now? Like they, the board did in 2015? That's my last question.
I would answer that, that there was no consideration that I know of that was taken on behalf of reducing the board's salary.
So Mayor Marquinez, I appreciate you answering, but that you know of. So was this budget made with Deputy Albert and all the, the entire board? Or was it done in just pockets, if I may ask?
Well, the, the budget process overall is conducted with the, with the treasurer, the mayor's office and the Board of Trustees. So it was all done collectively.
So is this something that we could put on the table? I mean, I know executives that are taking a 30% cut in salary that are working full-time. They're, I mean, corporate America is, you know, deducting everything just to sabotage the employees and the programs that are in place. So I'm just asking.
Yes, if that's, if that's something that the public would like to see, I would make the motion to take a 10% pay cut additionally.
I don't know how the other 196 people feel on this call about that. That's my last question. How would the trustees and the deputy mayor feel about that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll just chime in for a moment. We actually did discuss this a little bit in terms of seeing if it would help resolve anything. Now, I should point out that the trustees earn about $9,000 a year. So we'd be talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $900. And we added the numbers up and said, this won't change the tax rate one iota, okay? So it was, we'll call it on the table, but I should also point out, and it didn't affect me because I wasn't a trustee at the time. But when the, when the trustees last took a 10% cut in 2015, that was never restored. So actually, the current rate is already 10% down. So I just want to at least throw that out for the benefit of the public. But, but it's, we, you know, we can certainly discuss further.
Just as I made that proposal back in 2015 for that, that reduction across the board of 10%, which the board kindly accepted, I am also willing to do it again without it being restored. So we can, we can further discuss that, absolutely.
Okay, Mayor. Frozen was, was what I said audible to everyone?
Yes, we believe we got your whole statement, trustee Albert.
Okay, Mayor, the next person that we have on a list here, just give me one second, and I'll find their name. Sorry.
Excuse me.
It's going to be Frank Provenza, I'm sorry, Provenza. And Frank, Frank, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, but the woman previously answered all my questions and asked as many questions as she could. And I think we should shoot for a 15% cotton pay. And my other suggestion would be the code enforcers not receive any pay, but receive benefits. Because I believe that's what they work for. And I guess like $23,000 a year. And listen, $900 is 900 bucks, man, put back in that budget. That's the way I look at it. I own my own business and if I had an extra $900 in there, I'd be able to buy a $900 tool or at least know that I have that extra $900 to hire a guy for the week. So 900 bucks is 900 bucks. I would shoot for that. I would go 15%. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Okay, we're going to move on to our next speaker. That's going to be Nicole. Nicole Jamboree, if I have that correct. Nicole, are you there?
Yeah, close enough, Jamboree, dig. I, I just wanted to echo everything that the two people before me said. I'm also concerned that as fiduciaries of the town, you think any amount is de minimis. As a fiduciary, you should believe that no amount is de minimis. I'm also looking at the numbers that were posted on the website, which I'm not sure are now current. However, I see there was a, from the adopted budget for 2020 to the tentative budget for 2021, there was a $400,000 increase in salaries and wages. I was wondering if those were merit-based increases or contractual increases? And whether or not those encompassed new heads taken into headcounts throughout the different departments? Or will there be a hiring freeze?
So I believe the, the majority of the, of the increases that you have seen are contractual increases in between the, the PBA, the CSEA and the dispatchers union, along with other non-union employees that are guided by work rules and contractual obligations. What was the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
Are you going to institute a hiring and wage freeze throughout the next fiscal year?
Wage freeze is, well, currently we're guided by contractual obligations. So we're obligated by contract, by law. It's something that was being discussed to some degree. And the hiring freeze, I would say, nothing official has been issued. But it's definitely something that I'm looking at.
Okay, and then my last comment is, I'm a little concerned about how procurements are being noticed. I think it's a little disconcerting that you only had one bid on the, I think it was the garbage you had said earlier.
Yeah, so the, the container district, which we put out to bid and we only did receive one return.
How are you posting those procurements?
Those posted, they are posted in accordance with the municipal law. Mike, how is that actually posted, Mr. Janito?
Well, I believe they go through a competitive bid process, Mayor, which is they're advertised, they're posted in the newspaper, they go out to firms that they know provide this type of service. And then they come in as sealed bids. Those sealed bids are then opened up. I believe this bidder was the only bidder, even though they did notify directly some other local. And I believe that's about the time that Nicole has. So if you have any other comments, Mayor or the board, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just one other follow-up to the resident's question about, so as the mayor pointed out, a lot of those, those increases are largely contractual. And I think Mr. Janito pointed out that the, you know, the police contract is the next one coming up. Those, those contracts have been negotiated with our former labor attorney and the mayor. And so those increases are largely attributed to that. We now have a new, new labor council. And we're also looking for the entire board to be involved in those labor negotiations. So hopefully with everybody's collective involvement and the new labor attorney versus solely the mayor and the former labor attorney, we, we hope to have a better outcome with some of those contract negotiations coming up.
I would, I would also follow up with the, with the statement of that Mr. Gerard, trustee Gerard was part of the contract negotiations within the CSEA. And along with the former trustees that were on the board previous were involved. It was not just the mayor and the former labor attorney, just to be clear.
The, the CSEA, you're correct, and I'm proud of the outcome that we had on that one. It's, it's the other, it's, it's the police contract that you voted in and negotiated that is, is really driving most of that cost. And that's the one we're hoping to get better involvement and better representation.
Correct.
Okay, Mayor.
You voted on that, I didn't vote on that.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And, and just going to contract negotiations is, is a very complex issue that every municipality faces. And that, you know, especially with the, with the police unions, that there is a thing called binding arbitration, which is a very costly and arduous process. So trying to have these contracts negotiated in a timely fashion, which they were not, we need to continue on to keep our contractual obligations whole.
Okay, Mayor, I just want everyone to know, we have probably about 25 people waiting. So we're going to move on to the next one. Who's Sharon Wallace? Sharon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
My questions are regarding, I've been listening in on a couple of the meetings, I cannot get out, I'm over at the Willows right now. These meetings are, to me, getting so strenuous with everybody fighting with one another. And if, if the mayor disagrees with somebody, the next word to hear is moving on. Why can't one piece of information be finished before something gets moved on? Or when the board is being questioned by an email that the mayor has read, nobody from the board answered, everybody's silent.
So that's the challenging part now, especially going through teleconference. But I know that it, it has happened in, in public. But I feel that the public, to some degree, the, everyone here, myself included, needs to be held accountable.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mayor. Why isn't anybody else saying anything? Why, why doesn't the board say something about that? The only thing we have heard is regarding the suggestion about taking a cut in pay and now the board says, no, it's not worth it. I agree with Frank. I used to be in business, anything that you can contribute to a business, to a town, go for it, help the town out. Why aren't you doing that?
Does the board, would the board like to?
Well, I, I would, I would offer to take a 50% cut for all the trustees if the mayor will join me in taking a 50% cut.
That will be that will be up for discussion.
Okay, we're back to moving on.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Wallace.
Can I add this comment? That the village already has a problem attracting mayoral candidates. The mayor has run unopposed. And, you know, I worry, who would be interested in being a mayor if we cut the pay 50% in upcoming elections?
Well, I guess I'd propose it for this year, since we're struggling with the budget, but not make it a permanent thing.
Maybe we could propose it for this year, and then it automatically goes back to its regular amount at the beginning of the budget process next year, and then next year, we would have the opportunity to cut it again.
Well, again, just to be clear, I was taking one for the team if the mayor will join me. I wasn't asking everybody else to, but I'd be happy to do that if the mayor will join me.
That we would have to give consideration to. The mayor, the mayor here, this mayor, me, I come into this office, and I give 110% of my time to this, and that I make sure and ensure that all of our employees, residents, staff, veterans, seniors are well taken care of, and that we have a great village to live in, to raise a family. This challenge here is not like a bucket challenge that we see on TV. I am a full-time mayor at a part-time salary. I already initiated a cut. I said I would continue to discuss this if so if so needed.
You're spending a lot of that 110% of time riling up the residents and being dishonest about what we're coming out of meetings and saying. So it seems like you've got a lot of extra time on your hands to actually work for the village instead of conjuring up and dividing the village between government bodies. Okay, we're a board, we're supposed to work together. Stop running out there and trying to divide the village. Work with us. The other four of us, we barely knew each other before we joined this board, but we seem to be able to work together. I don't even belong to a political party. I'm not partisan to anybody, but you seem to be very partisan. This is the first time you've had to deal with a board that actually is going to get up here and challenge some existing thinking, and you are pushing us back every chance you get. Work with us. Don't don't sit in a meeting and agree with things and then run out and start telling the village that something else happened. It's a waste of everyone's time. And you got a lot of people upset over over this. We could have been working on this problem days ago, but you didn't do your job when you left that meeting. You didn't go talk to the union, you didn't go talk to your department heads, you just decided to blabber around the village that the trustees are bad people.
Let's.
Stop doing that. That's where you're spending all your full time. Run the village, be a leader.
That that's what's going on, Mr. Gerard. I'm sorry that this public participation session has once again turned into an attack. But you know what? Initially, this board recommended eliminating the two positions from the recreation department due to the overwhelming response from the public, not from not from Mayor Markounis, this is from the public.
You called the meeting.
Excuse me, but I am speaking. This this the from the public against these proposed revisions, I know that we're going past these revisions, is now suggesting that the entire recrea, you you wanted to go and this is, I can't even continue. Now you wanted to go to a part-time recreation staff. You were trying to claw your way out of this debacle that you created. Considering these proposals, most likely will result in less savings than the original proposal due to continuation of of the benefits. If you wanted to go move on part-time employees, it appears to me the desperate attempt of one board member to create a legacy of fixing the village's financial issues, which developed as a result of mismanagement from 2014 to 2015. The board member that appears to be driving this effort to eliminate the recreation department attended countless board meetings and budget discussions, demanding budget details down to the line item so that he could eliminate the waste by simply cutting line item percentages. That's not the way you do it. His approach trivialized the complexity of the village operations and revealed a total lack of understanding. There was a total lack of understanding on these proposals because, and I'll tell the public why, you could hear to discuss, the public, I'm going to tell you, that since this board has been elected, I would say that each one of them may have been in my office two to three times on their own while I was here every day. I'm sorry, but this this does have to stop. I can't continue, and I will not, I will not discuss executive session in public. That is, that is a confidential matter, as Mr. Albert said.
Nobody's asking you to. I'm just saying that you called the meeting to discuss.
I am making a statement. Okay, Mr. Janito, I'm sorry, but the next public comment? Mr. Janito?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
There you go, we got you now.
Okay, so very good. We're getting a lot of comments from the the public, and they're concerned that there's a lot of discussion going on among the board, but they haven't had their opportunity to be heard, and they're only given 30 seconds each. We, as I said, have about probably 15 to 20 people waiting. So if we'll move on.
Down commentary, we'll let the public speak.
Yeah, so we have Darrell's, Darrell is going to speak, I hope. Darrell, are you there? Darrell?
Hello. Darrell? Yeah, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I just had a question about the details of the shortfall. Why is there such a shortfall this particular year that there needs to be cutting of numerous lines on the budget as well as raising the tax? Why not one or the other? What's causing what appears to be a larger than normal shortfall?
Do you want me to take that one, Mike?
Yes, sure, go ahead.
Okay, I think it goes back to one of the items which was pointed out earlier is the the contractual obligations that are that are set from from the contracts that were negotiated. And the other thing is, we, you know, through through people, you know, grieving their taxes, through squires, we lost a lot of tax base. Okay, so now the the cost of the village need to be needs to be spread over fewer taxable properties, fewer residents, if you will, and and I think, Mike, that that's probably the majority of the of the the challenge that we have. So we have increasing expenses, we have fewer, a lower assessed value to spread the cost across, and that's what that's what creates the challenge. And we're trying to, we're trying to keep the tax increase as low as possible because, you know, we try to do that anyway, but particularly in this situation with so many people falling in hard times very, very quickly, we are, we are trying to to set is, there's a certain amount that we're not comfortable going over as to for the residents to have to absorb. So we were, you know, we're trying to get as close to that, no more than 3% as possible. With the changes we made, we're still not quite there, but we're, you know, we're we're close to half where we were last year, which we feel is good progress. But it is a challenge because of those issues. Is that anything out, Mike?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I want to add one thing as far as one of the challenges we wanted to achieve was to come in under the New York State mandated 2% cap, which isn't a tax cap on your rate, it's a cap on the levy, which actually we have achieved. So we have the numbers with all the changes we've made without the layoffs that were proposed. We are under the 2% tax levy cap that the New York State imposes. And in fact, it's the first time in quite a number of years that the village has come in under that cap.
Okay, so now we have Brian Bogan, if I have that correctly. Brian, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
You may speak, go ahead.
Hi, how are you? I just want to know, does the DPW offer any services to Bon Air?
Other than plowing, water, wastewater, what services are you referring to?
Trash, is that part of, do they, is that part of?
No, that's not. That's a, that goes out to bid.
Okay. So no village taxpayer from Bon Air pays anything for trash removal? It's all independent contractor?
No, that's broken out on a separate line as a container district, container district fee.
Okay. So I have another question. Since the DPW is so short in revenue, how does the DPW look for added revenue as a streamline? For example, trash from village residents that are currently using private carding, does the DPW ever come and give a bid to try to get more revenue into the village?
No, not in that aspect, no.
Why not?
We don't have the equipment to manage the that type of service with the containers and the the vehicles, I believe, like the trucks.
It is, but can you offset that with the added revenue stream to the village and it actually go into the village coffers instead of private carding coffers?
It could, it could be something that could be looked at.
Okay. All right, that's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the for the record, I also inquired about that exact thing in an email a few weeks ago.
Okay, so I guess we can move on?
Yes.
Okay, so our next speaker is Jackie. There's two Jackies, actually. I'm going to mute one, unmute one. Jackie, are you the one who wanted to speak?
Hi, yes, thank you very much. So the question I had was just regarding contractual obligations, and this might be a legal question, but given the unprecedented circumstances that we're in with this global pandemic, is it possible for those contractual obligations to be voluntarily, you know, foregone and renegotiated? Or is there an opportunity to look at that? I mean, understanding that they've previously been negotiated and, but just wondering if that's a possibility if we needed to further balance the budgets or find additional resources?
Well, there was some discussion in regards to that, and it really pertained to, I would say, furloughing the the increases, but then guaranteeing a payback, you know, buying it back if the village, I'm saying, if they foregone their raise, we would still have to pay it back retroactively. So I hear what you're saying. We did have a brief, brief discussion about it. I don't think we're at that level yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. So the next one we're going to have is a gentleman by the name of Steve Christopher. And let me unmute him. Steve, are you there?
I am, thanks, Michael.
You're welcome, sir.
That's a tough act to follow, but I want to thank the mayor and the village board for for seeing the clarity on the importance of the rec departments. You know, since everybody said this was some rebel rousing going on, I would be very curious on the changes if the entire board was unanimous in reinstating the folks that was originally proposed. I don't know if that's public knowledge, but I'd be very curious if that's the case. Also, you know, I have to say, as a village resident, the peacefulness in the previous administrations for the last couple of years has been a pleasure. You know, I was on the on the planning board a number of years ago where it was very contentious with the board, and people just didn't want to go. You know, the mayor and the previous board, you know, Mr. Albert, you mentioned the 30% increase in taxes, but a bit disingenuous in my mind that you say that, but don't mention the Lannigan loss of houses that Mr. Gerard mentioned, the loss of the Novartis revenue. So, you know, you just toss that out there as a comment without the facts. You know, I feel like I'm watching the federal government with some of these conversations going on. I think you guys all just need to get along. And Mr. Albert, you said there wasn't a proposal to eliminate two positions, but about four minutes ago, you said including the proposal of eliminating two positions. So little confused on on the comments seem to be not consistent. But I'd love to know if that vote was unanimous on reinstating the the positions, and I do appreciate the work you guys did to do that.
Let me just chime in. It was, it was not unanimous to eliminate them, and it is unanimous to reinstate them. And and thank you.
Okay, is that it, Steve?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker is going to be Lance Weinstein. Let me unmute him. Lance, are you there? Lance? Lance, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Question for you, Mike. Under the village clerk, I'm looking at the budget, she's going from $80,850 to $84,893.
I can't talk, I can't talk, you know.
Is that contractual?
The, yeah, let me answer that question. The village clerk, when she was hired, was hired in accordance and under the understanding of the what's known as the suffer and work rules, the village's suffer and work rules, which actually were established in 1998 and reviewed a few years after that by various boards. But in any event, those work rules essentially provide certain benefits similar to what is provided to CSEA union employees, that is, the leave time that they earn, steps for the first five years of employment, and longevity for every five-year anniversary thereafter. So she is in one of the first five steps where it's a 5% increase. That's why it went from $80,000 to $84,000.
Okay, but it's work rules, it's not contractual, correct?
Well, I would leave that to one of the legal counsel that's on this session because I'm not sure what makes a contract when somebody is hired if they're handed a written document that says these are your benefits and that's what they are hired under. But in any event, I'll leave it, defer to the legal counsel to respond to that.
Okay, that's something that should be reviewed because that's a $4,000 increase. So that's my one question. And the other question was with the piece of horn overtime budget, we're going from $300,000 to $360,000?
Yes, that's what's currently in the in the proposed budget.
Okay. How much do you know offhand how much it was they spent this year so far with the overtime budget?
I don't have those numbers handy. It was around $275,000. Last I checked, that was maybe three weeks ago.
Okay, so we're still under budget. So my opinion, it doesn't need to go up another $60,000 at the moment.
Well, there were two more months to go of the budget, you know, that was March, pretty much, and we're talking about April and May left.
Okay, so we're spending about $25,000 a month in overtime?
It's probably about right.
Okay, for 2.1 square miles? Okay, those are my questions.
Okay, I just wanted, I wanted to, all right. I was going to comment in regards to the village clerk and how it pertains to the work rules and the resolution of the hiring, which binds the village in regards to the work rules and the resolution under the hiring of the village clerk. Mr. Magrino, if you could, I believe we discussed this, or can Labor Council, Mr. Glick will speak about it.
Richard and I did discuss it earlier this this week. Somebody hired under the work rules. Somebody hired under the work rules. You know, those are the parameters that they're hired under, as you say, the village board put it through through resolution. If the board wants to change the rules, they would have to go through, you know, the ordinary process. But again, the rules that are in effect, you know, is, is, and what people are hired under is typically what the board proceeds with. So, Richard, I'll defer to you in terms of our conversation earlier this week on that also.
And also just for me to add that, you know, the work rules do pertain to numerous employees other than the village clerk, they pertain to non-union employees that are not covered by a bargaining unit agreement.
Right.
Also, going back to the additional overtime and the need for overtime with the additional criminal justice reform and the staffing levels in the police department, which are currently on the low side, and the criminal justice reform do, we do need the overtime to process the additional arrests that we encounter.
Okay, Mayor, the next, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mike, is Mr. Glickel available to comment on the first question for Mr. Weinstein? About, is it contractual?
He's muted. We have to unmute Richard.
I believe Richard was unmuted, he's also down as a.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, that's not contractual. But then you raised the question of good faith and the terms under which somebody within village employment, to the extent that the resolution, and I'm not privy to the hiring resolution, makes reference to those rules, then it'd be fair to assume that the village would abide by those rules. But it is not contractual, not in the sense of a collectively bargained agreement as exists with CSEA and of course the PBA.
So it is, it is in line, in accordance with rules, the rules set forth in the work rules as dictated in the, in the hiring resolution, which referenced the work rules, which make it to me, you know, contractual, yes, with the agreement, as it pertains to a CSEA or a PBA, contract would be somewhat different. But with the work rules that have been established and adopted by the Village of Suffering Board of Trustees, I would have believed that we would abide by those work rules.
Okay, our next speaker is identified as AM, please identify your name if you would. Are you there?
Hi, yes, I'm Anne Murphy, how are you?
Very well, thank you, Anne.
Good. The questions I have, and I understand, I mean, I did corporate budgets for a long time, and we were usually in a position where, you know, if it came down to a point where you had to freeze your budget, it was, it was a freeze, you know, and we're, we're looking at a point in time where we may be facing another depression, and yet we're still talking about raising taxes. And I think it's irresponsible, and I think that you need to go and look at what you can do to cut so that people have an opportunity to stay in this village. And people who are losing their jobs and getting cuts that are paying these taxes, they don't, they don't have the opportunity to just say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you more money, I'm gonna raise the taxes. You guys need to do something different. And I, I don't think it's looking at the smallest budget line items to do that. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Anne. All right, our next guest is going to be Michael Pagano, and let me just find you here, Michael. Are you there, Michael?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate it, and thank you all for, I'm glad we're all able to be here tonight and, you know, hear all the comments and everything that's going on. Just a question, a couple of quick questions. You know, that beautiful building that's in town, the residential building that is across from the Suffering Train Station, I don't remember the name of the development off the top of my head.
Sheldon?
Yes. So a lot of towns up and down the train line, I take the train into Hoboken every day when we're able to take the train. A lot of, a lot of towns are doing what they call transit-oriented development. Are there other sites within town that we're looking to do things like that particular project? That might bring in more revenue into the town, is there anything being looked at as far as you know?
There are a few projects that are being proposed, they've been in the pipeline for quite some time now, a few years. Hopefully, they will come online to offset some of the, the taxes, create another revenue stream.
So that was, that was my question, because it, yeah, I was figuring about the revenue stream. Has that new place brought in, you know, I don't know if it's considerable amount, but it has brought in some money to the town, correct?
Yes, they, actually, they, we did enter into a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, which they pay a reduced amount of taxes and associated with a host community benefit. So when you take the host community benefit, an annual host community benefit, and your, and the tax rate that they're paying, and associated water and wastewater cost, that's what's driving that revenue stream to the village.
Okay, that's good. And the other question, I know we, there was that proposed thing from Avon that fell through. I can't remember how that all went down, but is there anything else like that being looked at? You know, to, probably not the right time right now because of, you know, or possibly going into a recession. But is there anything else like that being looked at right now?
Not at this time.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would probably be the right time to go right now. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Michael. The next one that we're going to have is Abraham, and let me just find you, Abraham. Abraham Villegas? And it looks like, are you there, Abraham? Hello? Abraham, are you there?
He's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Abraham, go ahead.
He's muted.
He must keep muting himself, because he's unmuted here, and he stays unmuted for a little bit, and then he gets muted again. But we're not doing it on our end.
Okay, since we're having a technical problem, Mike, if we could move on.
Yeah, we'll try Abraham again a little later, how's that?
Thank you.
All right, so.
Yeah, there's, there's some, some kind of difficulty, technical difficulty.
Yeah, okay, so let me get to our next speaker, who is going to be an iPhone guest. So I'm going to have to ask you to identify yourself. Are you there iPhone guest?
Is it me, am I, am I unmuted?
I just unmuted you.
My name is Brenda Penzac. Some of my, some of my questions and concerns have been already answered. I do have a line item, judicial overtime, $6,000, what was that for?
Judicial overtime would be used by the courts when they're, obviously, sometimes they have to work after hours and longer than 40 hours a week in order to complete the work of the court.
Okay, you've addressed, addressed the raises, you addressed quite a bit the contingency account. I still don't understand the increase, and I know you said you put the garbage out for bids, but this was a 13.8% increase. Is there no follow-up? When you put bids out and no one responds, there's no way to follow up on bids?
I believe that would be more of a question for maybe the legal staff to answer, or Superintendent of Public Works. But when they do go out to bid, they, they can reject it if it's the only bid, and then rebid it if they felt that there would be an opportunity for others to perhaps bid on it. But as I understand it, they covered quite a bit of ground in trying to get a competitive bid. The other thing you have done, just, just a quick note, that that contract, you know, did run from 2016 to 2020.
Which, right, four years, I saw that, a four-year contract.
At the same price for four years. And so now they're, one of the things that has happened in that period of time, as you're probably aware.
The cost.
Is the, not only the cost, but you also had a much stronger recycling capability where the Carter could have obtained some offsetting revenues from the sale of recyclables. And the market for recyclables has just about dried up. So while we could do it.
I, I did notice that. My question is, does it pay? It went, the amount of money made or taken in from that has gone down so much, does it pay to still recycle?
I think it does for the environment, if nothing else.
The environment, okay. I would like to address, I'm new to this, all right? But I have to tell you, the past last night and tonight, the interaction with the trustees, you should all be ashamed of yourselves on, on your behavior. I have to tell you, it's like listening to five-year-old spat, the way you have spoken to, whether you like Mayor Markunus or not, okay? The interaction is disgraceful, and I'm sure I'm not the only one that feels this way. Let me tell you, I voted for most of you, and let me tell you, come election time, I am going to work so hard to be a smarter voter, because I think your behavior is despicable. So I thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Can I ask why you're directing that to the trustees?
Yes, the way you behave and the way you've handled yourself, the way you speak, it's, it's, it's like you're gaining up and you speak like children in a spat, and it's so obvious that you don't, that you don't. I'm not, I'm not going by political parties, please, okay? I don't do that, but listen to yourself, if you can re-listen to the beginning of this, the tones of your voice, your voices, how you speak to the mayor, how you, it's disgusting. I'm appalled, and I said that to someone last night, I said, listening to the spats, okay, from all of you, okay? It's, I'm actually shaking, I'm so appalled at your behavior and the way you speak. I want you, this is on tape, go back and listen to Steve Alpert and whoever else, your tone when you talk. It's disgusting, I'm ashamed. To me, this is like, I'm dealing with a bunch of rookies, people that shouldn't even be involved in my village politics, I have to tell you. So I want you to do me a favor, people, okay? I want you to go back and listen to your tapes, listen to your voices, listen to how you speak, listen to last night and tonight, and maybe you'll see what I'm saying. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Anne, can I address your comment that I am a rookie at this? And whatever I do.
No, no, wait, wait a minute. I didn't say you're a rookie, what I said, listening to you, I'm not saying you're a rookie.
I'm, I'm saying I am a rookie.
Okay.
I've been doing this, you know, I've been doing this for just a few months. And when I do speak, I think about the way Governor Cuomo talks, and I try to use him as a role model. If I'm not doing a good enough job at that, I'm gonna try harder.
No, then let me just say something, then, then work on the tone. What you're so, the way you speak to the mayor, I mean, it's condescending, it's terrible.
Excuse me, I appreciate all those comments, and I think we just have to move on, because we do have.
Not a problem, I appreciate your time, all of your time, thank you.
Yes, and I do, thank you very much, thank you very much. Just a quick note that Michael Pagano had written in a chat that he forgot to ask something of the mayor, that the mayor had mentioned there's other transit-oriented districts in the pipeline, or spots in the pipeline, and he was wondering if they are close to coming to fruition anytime soon. He had forgotten to ask that question, so Mayor, maybe you could respond to that?
Sure, Mr. Pagano, just, first of all, they, they are not other transit-oriented districts, but they are other developments. So there's a little bit of a difference there. They weren't proposed as TROs, as transit-oriented, TRDs, transit-oriented districts, but there were other projects in the pipeline.
Okay, so we have Lance Weinstein, there's nobody else on the list that I see. And I'm just going to see if we can have, we'll find Lance again. And then there's one other speaker besides Lance, so I'm gonna unmute Lance at the moment. Lance, are you there?
Yeah, Mike, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Seems like you had your hands full there.
Yeah, I don't like the music.
No, sorry, a quick question again, on the budget for the street department, it's frozen at $80,000? It didn't go up at all?
You're talking about the overtime?
Correct, the overtime budget for the street department.
Correct, I mean, that's, that overtime is determined by the Superintendent of Public Works in consultation with the Supervisor of Public Works, and they prepared that budget.
Do you know if they're approaching the $80,000 for this fiscal budget?
I would have to check. I, I don't, I, actually Lance, I don't know at this point, but I'll, I'll look into that, and we can get back to you by email, how's that?
That's fine. And the other thing with the, the village clerk, actually, let me just one step back a little bit, with the, with the overtime for the police department, with the bail reform, actually, overtime should not go up under a new bail reform, it should actually go down. Because defendants now, most defendants are released on appearance tickets, they're not held for arraignment, so to speak.
Okay. We base our, the police budget is determined by the, as you're probably well aware, the police chief, along with the administrative lieutenants, and that's what they proposed.
Yeah, and it's more along the lines of with the discovery requirements, the new discovery requirements, and the additional paperwork in the transmittal of all of the information that needs to be disclosed to the district attorney's office. So that is a more challenging impact on our police departments, not only here in the Village of Suffering, but throughout the state of New York.
But isn't that done by the records clerk? And didn't you just have a part-timer for the records clerk?
There is, I'm sorry, yes, there is additional, there is additional work that needs to be done, and it's a challenging time right now, and we continue to work our way through it.
What's the additional paperwork, do you know?
Offhand, the names of the paperwork, no, but it's all within, as, as you may know, there are additional paperwork that is required in the discovery process for the prosecution.
Right. Ed, if you want, it's, it's paperwork, it's audio recordings, video recordings, and all within 15 days of arraignment, which, you know, Mr. Weinstein, I know it's much different than, than years ago in terms of discovery, and it's much, they have changed it a little bit, hasn't been implemented yet, but the discovery is much, much different, there's a lot, a lot more that's due and, and very close to arraignment. So that's why, you know, there's dedicated, or officers dedicated main departments to, frankly, to just that, to getting audio, to getting video, to getting reports, witness names, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot more, it changed significantly January 1.
Okay, Lance has reached his three minutes, so I'm gonna put him on mute if the board or attorneys want to present anything. or Attorneys want to present anything else, that's quite all right. And we have some other people waiting, so.
Can I just chime in about something I wanted to say regarding recycling? Somebody asked about whether the recycling's worthwhile and whatnot. I had done some research, just looking at nearby villages, and I noticed it was sort of an anomaly, even though the value of the recycling, as we all know, has gone down. I believe Mr. Janito had asked you a question about that a few weeks ago, and you forwarded me an article that was very enlightening. Having said that, I was looking at Wesley Hills' budget for the current proposed year, and based on their prior year, they are earning roughly $16,000 from recycling, I believe ours is somewhere around $2,500 or just under. And I looked up online, actually just now during this meeting here, that their population is 5,628 for Wesley Hills. So it's less than half our population, presumably there's less than half the amount of recycling. So I'm wondering if there's any opportunity for us to find out who Wesley Hills uses to purchase their recycling materials, and maybe we could move in that direction, because maybe we just don't have a very good contract at the moment for the recycling.
Okay, thank you.
Here we have Katie, Kay as a guest.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead, Katie.
Hi, it's actually, that's my daughter's name, my name is Stacy. I'm just, you mentioned that you're comfortable, if I recall the words correctly, you're comfortable with us having between a 3% and a 4% tax increase, with the global pandemic that is going on, with the thousands of people within our village who are unemployed, who have yet to receive their unemployment from New York State, who have yet to receive their stimulus check, with the dozens of children and families with, just within our village, that are food unstable. The idea that you're comfortable with 3% or 4% tax increase is unacceptable. I think you will need to put your pencil to paper, sharpen it, sharpen it twice, and find ways to cut this budget, so that this village and the people of this village, who have literally given their blood, sweat, and tears to keep their homes in this village, you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Katie, oh, I'm sorry, not Katie, Terry.
I'm going to be last.
Yeah, let's see, so, I'm sorry, we've got another one from the Village of Suffolk. I want you to identify yourself, please.
Michael, it's Bruce, how are you?
Bruce Simon.
Sorry about that, don't know why it says Village of Suffolk, we'll endeavor that moving forward. I wanted to address the recycling question. There is not a contractor for recycling, Mr. Alfred, and so everybody knows. Recycling is regulated by the county, everything has to go to the recycling facilities within the county, the county-owned properties. We, it is actually illegal to take recycling directly out of the county, we can only bring it to the facility. And just to, minor correction, you said Suffolk gets about $2,400, we actually get about $24,000, $25,000 every year. We are the, generally the best recycler in the county, although the last quarter, we slipped the number two behind Airmont, we need to work on that.
I'm going to.
Okay. You're muted, Steve.
I'm sorry about that, I'm going to identify how much that's in the budget for, I recall reading about $20,000, $25,000, $2600. I will double-check and get back in a second.
Okay, well, I'm not questioning what you're seeing, but I see the statements from the Recycling Committee, every quarter, from the county, we collect $6,000 and change, we get back $6,000 and change, on average, every quarter. That's why I said it's between $24,000 and $25,000.
Mike, do you know offhand what we budgeted for?
I found the number.
What you're looking for, Steve?
I found the number, it's A2651 on the budget, on page 18. It's, actually, I was wrong about the number, and I apologize, that my memory was a little off, but it's still lower by about half from what was listed for Wesley Hills, which is a community about half our size, and it's listed on the budget as $7,337 for actual for 2019, but then $3,000 is proposed for tentative 2021. So I'm a little concerned about the differential here between the number that Mr. Simon is saying, and the number that's in the budget for actual for 2019, and for moving forward, $3,000 is budgeted for 2021 fiscal year.
Well, we can, we can certainly, yeah, what I was going to say is, we can certainly find out if indeed there's $20,000 or $24,000 coming in from recycling, and it's not showing up in the budget line for recycling, obviously, somebody is identifying it, perhaps as solid waste or some other fee, so we'll address that with the Superintendent of Public Works.
Thank you.
And have that clarified.
Thank you, and I know I'd asked this exact question, I think, two meetings ago. Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Mike.
Okay, just so you know, I'm opening up the most recent statement, Suffolk got $6,070.05. That was our recycling return.
For what, for how many months, or how many weeks?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, that's great news. That means it is about $24,000, $25,000 a year. That's great.
Okay, all right, thank you, Bruce. I see, I'm sorry I cut Bruce off there, but I'm sure he doesn't mind, he'll get back to us later.
Bruce just down $22,000 in our budget, that's fantastic news.
Yeah, it's probably buried somewhere else, be careful. Okay, so now we have a couple of people, there's an M Tedeschi, I'm going to unmute you, do you wish to speak?
Yes, my name's Matthew.
Okay, Matthew, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time to do this. Clearly, I think from all the messages and everything we hear, is that people are very invested in Suffolk, you know, with their heart, with their passion, and with their money. And so I think it's very important that we're sensitive to people's lives, whether you have different viewpoints on the budget, whatever your view on different lines about overtime, you know, the sewer, or what have you, is to remember the people here, and that people are trying to, you know, live their lives to the fullest here. And I think that the hardest, but the easiest solution is to create more revenue. So instead of, you know, picking and bickering over certain lines and numbers, and trying to grab dollars and pennies, is to create that environment where the budget doesn't have to do that. And I think that there are opportunities, but it takes a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to create, whether it's the transit developments, whether it's something with the quarry, and building something, some type of warehouse there. I think those are the major solutions that we have to point towards, and instead of just trying to slash year, or cut year, or put a few dollars there, that the grander vision is what's going to save Suffolk from slipping down a long, slow, sad line here. All right, so thank you very much for your time, and I hope people have a vision for the future, instead of just trying to go year by year, saving this and that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matthew, and we're going to move on to our next speaker. This is Lois. Lois, would you please identify yourself?
It's Frank Hagan, Mike.
Okay, are you dressing up again, Frank?
I dressed up again.
Okay, so you're on line.
Thank you, I wanted to say thank you all for working on the budget, and would you please work together, you talk about it, please do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, our next guest is Liz. Liz, can you hear us?
Yeah, thank you, this is Liz Kendall, I just, the timeline for the budget approval, so you're voting on the budget April 30th, is that correct?
That is correct.
Will we have an opportunity as a public to see the new revised budget before you vote on it?
Yes, what will happen from tonight is, the Board will come up with their final numbers, that will, for adjustments to what has been the tentative budget, and then we will work furiously to get all of those numbers into a document that the Board will have before, on April 30th, and we can publish that document on, as a draft form, onto the website, so that people can see the entire budget document that they are going to vote on.
And will you take public comment once that's posted?
Well, yes, I mean, the Village Board can take public comment, and the best way to do that is via email, they can send it to budget@sofournny.gov, but at that point, it's a document that probably would not be changed, because the Board does have to adopt the budget, and all of the numbers have to be in place, so they know exactly what they're voting on, in terms of a tax levy, a tax rate, whether or not they've exceeded the tax cap.
Just one comment on that, because it doesn't seem from, I've been listening from the beginning, actually, I've been listening since yesterday, it doesn't seem that that's clear, and it's certainly not clear to me, as someone resident who's listening to this, so for us not to be able to see a new revised draft before it is voted on, seems a little bit odd, and so, why is the, why is the date set for April 30th? Is there a reason it can't be extended, given what happened yesterday?
Yeah, New York State law provides that the budget has to be adopted on or before May 1st, and it typically is adopted sometime in the final days of April.
Okay, yeah, I would love to see the new draft, and I'd love to have a, you know, have some time to look at it and make comments before you vote on it, those are my thoughts. Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome, Liz, if anybody else has a comment for Liz. Okay, then we have one more guest that it looks like left on the line, and that is Michael's iPad, if we're going to unmute you, Michael, could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Michael Curley. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Michael?
He's muted again.
Hold on, Michael, if you're muted, let's get you unmuted. One moment, please.
Okay, I think I got, I think I got it, right?
It looks like it. Now, hold on, Michael, don't touch anything. You should be unmuted now, Michael.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. It seems the Board has come to an understanding, so I leave certain things alone, but I just want it known, that there were a lot of scare tactics used with misinformation, there was a lot of emails from outside the county and outside the state, yet we are the ones paying for it, the village taxpayers. The Recreation Department was still going to exist, and a lot of events would have still gone on, or military things, and as things opened up with the coronavirus, we would have been able to. But years ago, not that far apart, we always had one full-time recreation person. It was only in the last few years, now that we have three full-time people and one part-time person, all collecting full benefits, all are able to then, after a certain amount of years, and not that many, retire from this village with health care, lifetime health care. So I just don't want the misinformation to go there without people really understanding why. It was my understanding that it was the mayor, a couple of, a few weeks back, actually, said, let's get rid of the whole Recreation Board. But I'll leave that alone right now, I'd actually like to thank all the vital services that we have. We are sitting, while we are sitting our homes, and we hear sirens, it is our police and fire services, and ambulance, that are putting themselves at risk. I just want to remind people of that. We need to also work on the next year's budget, because it seems like you're pretty much where you're at. I've been privately working on the quarry myself, reading papers, documents, okay? The quarry is talking about selling for about $5 million, okay? We need to approach the town of Ramapo, and explain to them that we deserve a piece of that sale. They are not using it for what they represented to the residents of Suffolk, and I will go into that more at a later date, okay? But there were certain commitments they made at that time, when they got that, and I think giving us at least 20% would help us, it would help us keep recreation, it would help us pay for the fire engine, for our well-deserved firefighters, okay? We need to help projects on the drawing board to move ahead quicker. We know it's a bad time, but maybe not for them. We have to think about attrition, since we aren't laying off. We need to explain to organizations that use our property and lights, that we could use assistance to help keep our recreation online, not because of greed, but because of survival, Suffolk's survival. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, it looks like we have Catherine from Ate back on the line with us, and I'm going to unmute her. One second. Are you there, Catherine?
Hi, yes, it's Catherine, thanks again for calling on me. My question was, I know we have a current country, a current contract, pardon me, for the cell towers, is, was there ever an opportunity to expand and get other sites? That would be my one question additional that I'd like to ask, to generate revenue.
Sure, the cell tower that's located on Village Hall property is currently under a rental agreement with a company where no, it is a rental agreement that's going to expire in the year 2030, in the month of April, and so at this point, there's no opportunity to renegotiate that with other firms necessarily, unless the firm that's currently renting or the space would like to do that. Now, I can tell you that we did hear from them about two years ago, and they were actually talking about renegotiating the contract, but for a lower amount, and we said that we were not interested in doing that, and as such, then there were some other opportunities that were supposedly being presented to us, that people would buy out the contract, and then give us cash flow upfront, but when you did the calculation, the net present value of the cash flow you're receiving was actually less than what you would receive by just simply keeping the contract in place.
Got it, so there's, that's the only site that we have, and not additional sites, is that correct?
Yes, that's the only site that I am aware of.
Okay, so we wouldn't expand and identify other locations, or is this not something of interest for us?
I assume that that could be brought up between the Board and the Superintendent of Public Works, as to where another cell tower or cell site might be located. Typically, as you probably know, there are the different companies that rent the space or own the space, will look for their coverage in an area, and if there is a lacking of that coverage, in other words, dead spots, they will often approach you to see if they could put in a cell site, but Suffolk is pretty well-covered, actually, if you go onto some of the websites and look at the different cell towers, and what companies, whether it be Verizon, T-Mobile, or others, have access, AT&amp;T, and so forth, to their customers through those sites. But in any event, that's something we can certainly explore, although, to be honest with you, I think most of the cell sites are built out at this point.
Okay, that's fair. And then my other question was, with the Police Department, I think they removed $40,000 from their overtime budget, is that accurate?
Well, the Police Department, in the current fiscal year, started with $300,000 of overtime, and it appeared that they were going to exceed that this year, $300,000, so there was an additional $50,000 put in to cover through the end of the year, that's this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, the Police Department looked at it, and they considered things like the justice, justice court reform that's going on, and that's part of it. The other part of it is that they have a 3% raise this year coming, so if you just take 350 and give 3% on top of that, you can see that there's some additional funding that would be needed just to, if everything were to remain the same.
No, I understand that part, I'm sorry, Michael, I just, is that really a true transparency, like, can that really happen with all the extra things that are going on, and the extra paperwork the Police Department has to do? That's the only angle I'm coming from with my questioning. Is that a true, to be able to reduce it 40,000?
Well, originally, the Police Chief had requested 475,000, and then he came down from that, and it was his opinion that he could work within that budget of 360,000, that maybe some things are changing with the Justice Court Reform Act, Criminal Justice Reform Act, I'm sorry, and that might alleviate some of what they anticipated initially as the additional costs.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, I appreciate it. I was just concerned, was, are we giving them enough with the extra work that needs to be done? So thanks for clarifying that, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm going to take a last. Okay, I'm going to take a last look to see if there's anybody else. Let's see, if there's anybody else on line, nobody with a raised hand. And let's see if there's anybody else that wrote in here. Oh, yes, there's a, oh, there's a couple of people. Let me see here. So let's see if I can pick up. She's identified as Nan12345. Nan, are you there?
I am. It's Nancy Christopher of the Recreation Department. How are you?
Welcome, Nancy.
What I'd like to say is in response to Michael Curly's comment, that just when I was hired as a part-time recreation employee in January of 2004, the Recreation Department consisted of two full-time employees and two part-time employees at that time.
Is that it, Nancy?
That is all I have to say.
Thank you, Nancy, and thank you for the, the great job that you, in recreation, you yourself and the whole department continue to provide to the villages of Suffolk. And we do truly appreciate everything recre, and I'm sure all of the residents appreciate everything that goes on in the Recreation Department. And thank you.
Thank you very much. And we actually appreciate all the support. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Next, we have Kathy Sable. Sable, if I pronounced that correctly?
You did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you for putting this together. I really appreciate it. I, I just have a couple of questions. One is that I had read that the owner of Novartis is appealing the taxes. And I want to know if that was true? And if so, where were you at that, you know, with that at this point?
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I was going to say that normally we receive notices from our assessment clerk that there's a challenge that might be made. I mean, we haven't, at least my office has not received any notification or documents that would indicate that they're going for, for a reduction. They may very well be because the assessments are handled by the town. So people challenge them through the courts and the town defends those challenges. So we can look into it. But I, I have not, my office at least has not been made aware. I'm not sure if the attorney's office or if the mayor has been made aware.
I believe we weren't served properly on a tax searchary. That is, that's my understanding at this time.
And what, what is, can you tell me what that is?
The tax searchary is when they object to the amount of assessed value is placed upon the property.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. And, and the other was that I also had read that the town was under contract with, to buy the Avon building. Is that true? Or is that, or what's happening with that? Or what are they doing with it?
The town, the town, do you, are you referring to the villages of Suffolk?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. So the villages of Suffolk is not under contract with Avon to purchase the, the parcel on Washington Avenue. We did pursue it. It did not work out. So no, we are not in contract.
Okay, so do you know what's going on with it? Or?
Not at this moment. We haven't heard back from Avon in a few months now.
Okay.
They're, they're under a pilot agreement and in order for Avon to sell that parcel, they need the approval from the villages of Suffolk.
Okay. All right. But that's not the villages of Suffolk that is planning on?
Not at this time, no.
At this point. Okay. Okay. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. We have Sue iPhone waiting to be heard. And Sue, I'm going to ask you to identify once, once you're unmuted. Sue?
Okay, um, my name's Suzanne Joyce and I just want to thank everybody for doing this. And that way, everybody can participate and everything. And I'm not going to repeat myself, but hopefully, everybody can get along and work as a board the rest of their terms. And there's just a couple of questions I have. And actually, it's not to the, it's for everybody. Actually, we live in the villages of Suffolk. It's not a town. And we're in the town of Ramapo. So I just wanted to clarify that for, besides, of course, the board members know that, but just for the people listening to us. My question to whoever can answer, I just want to clarify, there was some confusion on, so regarding the recreation programs, I just want to make it clear that the recreation programs, from what I understood, are still going on and the two employees still will be on staff at the villages of Suffolk. Is that correct?
Well, it seems to be going in that direction based upon the board's statement and, and hopefully, we will achieve that goal. Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Um, the other thing I just want to make note is hopefully, it will continue for everybody, you know, because as I've sent him, I know that most of Suffolk, the villages of Suffolk, has been known for the recreation programs. And knowing that my kids are older, I'm sure everybody still enjoys that and the kids. So hopefully, you guys will work together and like everybody else is saying, do not cut those programs. Otherwise, you know, Suffolk's going to fall downhill. And the other thing is, I understand the pool's not open, which I agree with you guys regarding the virus, but I'm hoping that since it's out of the budget because of the virus this year, that it will hopefully be back open next year. You know, sometimes when you cut things, it's very hard to get them back. So I understand and I agree with you guys this year because of the virus. So I hope that's not the only reason that it's out of the budget for this year. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So thank you. And I just want everybody to be safe. And thank you for recording me. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to make one last check to see if anybody else is out there. Oh, we have Michael's iPad again. Michael Curly, that would be. Michael, did you want to add some other information?
Yes, I did. Just to let Nancy Christopher know, and that was her husband who spoke earlier, and it was her trend to Joe Brennan, who did emails from Allen Dale, New Jersey in reference to the offender, okay? But I didn't make it a personal attack. I was giving informational things. But what Nancy Christopher understands is who did she replace? She was made full-time not too long ago. Who did she replace? She said there was two full-time people. Now she makes a third full-time person. Who did she replace? So, you know, there is concerns about recreation and there is concerns about the money being spent. And there is concerns because people can't afford it. I'm not happy with the 3% to 4%. Most people, most people aren't, okay? And, and it's great that they went and did this scare tactic. But the reality is this, okay? You have three full-time people that, that will leave with lifetime medical benefits from this village. She was a part-time person for years. You had two full-time people. Why is she there? Why did you make her full-time? What is, where is the sense of the taxpayers? Where is the sense of young couples coming into this village? And hopefully, they can survive. So you know what? It's great to have events, but Little League has no paid people. It's volunteer and they do a great job. Richie Ellsworth did a great job there for years and, and many other people there now. And I'm not trying to pick favorites there. Football, did volunteers and they do a great job, okay? We have a recreation committee that's been underused now. There are so many people in this community that want to help, that want to do things, that care. But they squash them with paid people that we cannot afford. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Anybody else on the line? I don't see anybody else on the line, Mayor. Hold on, we have one new message.
Janito, Mr. Janito, I just have a quick question. It was my understanding in, in people that I spoke to, that actually Nancy Christopher full-time replaced two people at part-time. Is, is that correct? It was before, I think it was before I was a trustee, but is that correct?
I would have to look it up. You know, I arrived in 2014 July. I was only part-time in the village. I'm not really fully familiar with all the staffing that was on. I do see Steve Christopher is on the line waiting to be heard. If we could defer to him to give him some opportunity here. Steve, are you there?
I am, Michael. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Yeah, I just, addressing Mr. Curly, there wasn't an additional to the staffing at the, the Recreation Department. Nancy did take the place of two other people in that. And also, the incremental programs that have been brought to recreation is so different than what it was previous. So I just wanted to let that know.
Okay, also, just to reference Mr. Christopher, and the, the, the knowledge and the expertise that Nancy Christopher brings to this village, that provides to our senior citizens and our family members is, is, is at its greatest height now, where, where senior citizens are coming in and indicating that Nancy had made such a significant impact in their life, in their quality of life. It's, it's, this is what we need here in the villages of Suffolk. We need people to impact our residents, be it senior citizens, youth, veterans, whoever it may be. I know we have, we have veterans that meet in upstairs in the community room monthly. We have seniors that meet weekly. We have exercise programs, nutrition workshops. These are things that add a lot of value to the villages of Suffolk, along with the other events that the, that the recreation staff puts together. And that's why they are needed. Thank you. Michael, is there anyone else waiting?
Yes, Mayor, I'm waiting for Joseph. Joseph, are you there?
Can you hear me, Michael?
Yes, we got a lot of feedback. So you might be near a speaker with your microphone.
How about now?
That's much better.
My name's Joseph Hunt, CACA president here in the villages of Suffolk. I just want to clarify a couple of things. Especially through negotiations, we have taken a more approach at recreation because of the on-demand needs for seniors and youth programs to create full-time positions with the village in negotiations and eliminate a lot of part-timers. So we did this with the village to make sure we were efficient on programming and personnel to meet the needs of the village. Again, this bickering back and forth should end because we're not here about need employees and taxpayers. We're here to make a budget to make the village tax base feel comfortable. With all yous working together and a statement can come out from my mouth that I am proud that you guys are finally working together. So please keep it up and surprise me tomorrow with a nice meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, let's see if we have anybody else waiting on the line here. And I don't see any other, one, one last check here. Hold on. No, I don't see any other people waiting on the line, Mayor. So I, I think we can, and there's nobody else on the, on the chat asking to be speak. So you, I believe that at this point, you can close the public participation and we will close the chat.
Okay, at this time, we make a motion to close the public participation. Board, do you agree?
Yes.
Steve Barone makes a motion.
Steve Barone. And we have a second on that?
Second, Corrigan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to all of the public that voiced their concerns and actively are watching this on Zoom Live. At this time, I would like to ask the trustees, do any of the trustees have any comments as we move forward?
Meaning on the budget items that we talked about?
Yeah, or in general, yeah, whatever. And then I think we may need to adjourn into an executive session.
I, I have something, if, if no one else does, I have something unrelated to the budget that I just wanted to bring up.
Okay, I, I do have something I want to say, but I just want to make sure on the budget, just as far as numbers go, that, Mike, you're going to make those adjustments, please.
Yes, I'm going to make the adjustments as follows. And I think that unless the board tells me otherwise, this is what I'm, if you would confirm for me. All right. So what we have is in the Recreation Department, are we bringing back the two full-time positions?
Yes.
Okay, there is one part-time position in there. Are we bringing that back?
She is with the pool. No, not this year.
Okay, not a part-timer. And none of the pool staff?
Correct.
Are we going to keep the, are we going to reinstate pool maintenance at all? There was 10,000 for pool repairs and maintenance and 6,000 for chemicals?
I don't believe we need the chemicals. I think we have them left from last year. I'm gonna see if Joe Hunt is still available to comment on that.
Well, let's see. Let me bring it up, Joe, if he's still hanging. Hold on.
I believe, right, you know, just before we make any of these changes of decisions, that this pool, if it goes unopened, I believe that it needs to be fully maintained with the proper chemicals, possibly with the water and possibly with the equipment running. So the needs that needed to be addressed, I believe, may have been painting and repair of the pool, along with the, possibly the chemicals, and how to maintain the pool during, who will maintain the pool during the summer when it's not in use. So we cannot...
Right, so, so...
Joe, is Joe Hunt eligible to speak to any of that?
I think we need someone from the Water Department to speak to those points. They are the ones who maintain that pool.
Oh, yeah, Water Department does that.
Water Department.
I'm going, I'm going to unmute Joe if he's still there. Joe, are you there? Joe Hunt?
But we still definitely need the recommendation from the Water Department. If Joe could, if, I'm not sure if Joe knows about the chemicals and the availability to the village.
Well, I, the, okay, so why don't we do this? $10,000 is for repair and maintenance of the pool. So are we going to keep that in? And I can check with the Public Works Department tomorrow whether the 6,000 or some dollar amount for that should be put in?
Yes, that's what I would say.
Okay, so why don't we do that? I'll...
Let's certainly maintain the pool. If it needs work especially, let's maintain the pool and keep it top-notch.
Okay, so we'll ask about the chemicals. So we're not going to have the pool staff. We're not going to have the pool uniforms, obviously.
Right.
And then what about the recreation programs? Because I know there was some cuts made there. I think it was cut by $2,000. I, I think Kathy said she could live with that.
Yes, I think anything that came, yes, that came today from Kathy was not, was not valid numbers. There was some confusion there.
So, and then the other thing we'll do is we had the email from Charles Subwiki today that outlined a series of cuts in various lines for the street department, for snow removal, and for the curbside solid waste. So we'll make that change as well.
Yes.
Just, what was the snow removal, just before we say yes to that?
There were two lines. He didn't identify what the, other than by number, what the lines were, but it, the total amount was $7,500. I think it had to do with repair of, and maintenance of equipment.
Oh, it was still with the repair. Okay, it wasn't on the re, on the removal of the snow. Okay.
No, it's, it's part of like the repair of the equipment, which I believe that it was explained that apparently the Public Works Department has done a number of repairs and rebuilds on various pieces of equipment. And, and because of that, they will not need this. And they have plenty of tires in stock, so they will not need these costs to be added.
Correct. The repairs were made to the plows, the, one of, one of the trucks and the, we have excess inventory of tires.
Right. Okay, so...
And the lunch. Please add back in the lunch?
Yes, that's, I thought I mentioned, but yeah, the $5,000 for the senior lunch.
Yes, please.
And the community center utilities? Is that something that should be reviewed?
Or... That was cut by, what, $5,000?
$5,000.
It appeared to be higher than run rate and plus considering that we've been closed for a period of time and that might last a little longer. I realize some of that's this year. But when I looked at the previous years, it looked like it was more than the average, so.
It, it could be correct to some point. We, we did reduce it somewhat because... because I believe it was due to the LED lighting and other improvements made in that facility. But in any event, alright, we'll leave that as it was, so that, just, just to talk, I'll look over the list that was proposed. So, we're not going, again, we talked about maintaining the two full-timers, but the pool staff and the part-timer, no. And we'll adjust the pool revenues and the snack stand revenues because of that as well. Recreation programs, there was a program revenue there of $15,000 originally in one set of lines, which, you know, we cut. If the recreational staff is back, but not, I'm not sure how that affects their activities, whether we restore that back, back into the line. But if they're not going to reduce their programs per se, then we...
The programs definitely need to be funded.
With the exception of that $2,000, because I believe that $2,000 was the calendar design.
The printing of, or the layout of the calendar.
Correct, and Kathy said they can do that in-house, so, alright, so we can restore those revenues. And again, we already discussed the pool stuff, and lunch is gonna go back in. The utilities, we can keep that reduced by 5,000. The contingent account is reduced by the additional 50. Unemployment costs will be reduced down, we won't have to add that in. Police overtime will stay at 360, that, you know, that reduction of 40,000. And a part-time parking enforcement officer will be laid off. And the interest earnings, we're adding the 40,000 in there. So, that's pretty much it, other than the, again, additional new items that Charles put in.
And Mike, if you could, if you have a chance at some point to double-check on that recycling amount, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll find out, well, let me put it this way, Steve. If, if indeed the village brought in that money, if they actually paid us that money, it's sitting somewhere in some account. So, it may be in the solid waste fees, or, but we'll check that out, we'll find out.
Double-check, because I have, you know, we had Bruce Simon saying one thing, and the budget said another, so I don't like discrepancies, I just want to clarify.
Sure, we'll find out, and if it's been misclassified, then we'll reclassify it on the books and advise whoever's bringing in that money that it's to be identified in the proper account when it comes in.
Yeah, Michael?
Yes, sir.
So, in regards to the senior lunches, it's $5,000?
Yes, sir.
So, now, would we be able to offset that expense through a donation?
Well, you could if you had somebody that, that actually, you know, prom, you know, more than promised, but actually was reputable to give you the donation, yeah.
Right, so we have a great community foundation here that would like to make that offer, so that would be a $5,000 savings to the village, and they will contribute the $5,000 to fund the senior lunch program. I think that's, that's something that we should explore and would be greatly appreciated by not only the village taxpayers, but all of the senior community.
Sure, well, okay, if you have something, Mayor, you can forward it to me, and I'll include that as a revenue donation of 5,000, as long as we're comfortable that they're, they're a reputable, as you say, a found, a reputable foundation.
As long as the board is in agreement with that.
Yes, can you share who it is as well, just so that we can be very thankful to them?
Sure, it's the Peta Vincent Karati Foundation. So, it's a great foundation here in the villages suffering. We always work closely with the foundation, and they generously offering $5,000 to help the village out.
Yep.
And they've been helping out all of our first responders, actually through this COVID pandemic, with supplying thousands of face shields to first responders and hospitals. I can't thank them enough, thank you very much to the Vincent Karati Foundation, especially Peta, you do great work for the community, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Peter, that's terrific. So, Mike, so you would leave that in there, and then you just add donation revenue for 5,000?
Yes, that's what we would do.
Wonderful.
Thank you, that's terrific.
Okay, so Mayor, I guess it's in your hands. If you do want to go into executive session, we'll put a different splash screen up here. I know that you...
I did want to ask something, I did want to ask something unrelated to the budget while we're still in this meeting. I wanted to get a sort of sense from the board, because it's come to my attention from some posts that I saw that the village has been, I don't know what the right word is, sending summons, not summonses, but violation notices, I guess would be the word, to certain residents, because they had a flat tire on a car in their driveway because they haven't been driving, and they haven't been maintaining their vehicles, and it's very difficult if they're staying at home with the stay-at-home orders to do so. And yet, violation notices have been going out. I know of at least two, minimum two, that went out that are related to flat tire on a car in a driveway with a threat of, you know, I don't know, $5,000 fine. So, it seems, it seems like pretty heavy-handed during this COVID period that we have our code enforcer worrying about things like a flat tire when other things, I'm sure, are more pressing. Do we have an opinion on that, or consensus from the board?
We'll look into that, I know I was also contacted, but you know, in the last couple of days that we've been inundated with work, that we will continue to follow up with that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, that's all I can ask. I just, I just don't want to see us going after residents for miniscule kind of thing like a flat tire in a terrible time like this.
Okay. Do we need to go into an executive session? Does anyone have any executive session material that we need to cover?
I do not.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I do not.
Okay, I know we reviewed the changes with, just now, with Michael, the staffing. I don't think we need to go into an executive session at this time. I think we, we did come up with an agreement to keep the staff. I wanna, I personally want to say thank you to the board. I know that you did do a lot of work. It's very challenging, you are here working for the taxpayer, absolutely. I know we have indifference, and we are going to overcome those indifference, and it will be a better tomorrow for all of us. The board, never mind the board, but for the people, the residents of the villages suffering once we get through this, this pandemic. And I wish everyone out there a healthy and safe spring and summer. So, I do want to put my best foot forward, and I want to work together with the board.
We all want to work with you, Mayor, that's all we can ask.
Thank you.
Yes, and I just, I really just want to say that was really proud today working through all the negotiations and the conversations. The CSCA was great, the police department was great. You know, with this pandemic, we don't know what's going on. We need to be a very strong team, and what effect it's gonna have in our village. You know, our first responders, you know, they're out there, police, DPW, fire department, everybody. You know, this is just a very scary time for all of us. And, you know, it, look, we're gonna have some really bumpy roads ahead of us with this COVID, because we're not quite sure what's gonna happen in the future with it. So, I look forward to working with every person in every department and making sure that we're a sound fiscal village.
And I want to especially thank all the people on the front lines, the public works, collecting garbage, I mean, it's so dangerous, and they're doing this for us, and I, police, the fire, it's amazing, and they have, they have more courage than I know I have. It's, and I'm really proud that we have them working for us.
You know, let's not, once again, let's not forget like our staff here. Yeah, you know, the thanks goes to everyone.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, 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 I just, I just really, there's one particular individual here in the staff that has been going through tremendous impact. I won't put a name to the face, but I want to thank her personally just for the mere fact that we have, you guys will know what I'm talking about, we have the hospital here, and we monitor the birth and death certificates. So, I just want to acknowledge that one individual, the special staff member here in the village is suffering for maintaining all of those vital statistics.
Excellent point.
So, really, give them a call, that's a trying time for her.
That's a very good point, yes. Thank you.
Is there anything else from the board, or?
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Motion, motion to adjourn, motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Excuse me, the meeting of the tentative budget.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Megan Corrigan, second by?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone.
Everybody?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you to the village residents for coming out and observing our, our challenging Zoom meeting. Thank you, have a good night.
Hey, three, three times was the charm, we nailed it tonight.
Thank you, Michael.
You might want to mention the meeting.
Thank you, Mike.
You're all very welcome. How'd it work out?
We had well over 200 people at one point, I don't know if you were watching the numbers, it was great.
Yeah, it was very good.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to the changes, Michael.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright, thank you, good night.
Thank you, good night.
Bye.